Alderman Revelle, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
All right.
David Quorum.
Terrific. Welcome, everybody, to the special Evanston City Council meeting. All of our meetings are special, but this one literally is, I guess, formally a special meeting because the city council usually doesn't meet on the first Monday of the month. But we have a lot of business and one in particular item in particular that we're going to be talking about tonight, which is the budget workshop for the 2019 budget, something that we've been talking a lot about and will continue to talk about for the next couple of meetings. In terms of mayor announcements, the only announcement I'd say today is I just want to thank the students. We had a bunch of 5th graders from Dewey School, excuse me, 4th graders from Dewey here today, as well as 1st graders from Oakden School that were visiting City Hall and both the city council chambers. And we got the opportunity to talk to them. And Clerk Reed got to speak to them about voting and the importance of voting. So we had over 100 kids here, and some of them may be watching tonight, so let's show them what good government looks like. That wraps it up for my mayor announcement. City manager, any announcements?
Yes, sir.
City clerk, any announcements?
Oh geez, I do. So my only, a few announcements. Of course, tomorrow is Election Day. Evanston has, early voting has wrapped up. I think we're still wrapping up. There are still folks down in the basement currently voting. We've had, we'll have by the end of the day, over 1,500 folks vote just today, which is amazing. We've had, we're on track to have about 13,000 folks come out and early vote here at the Evanston Civic Center over the last two weeks. We are firmly in the top spot as the most utilized early voting center in Cook County for the first time in a general election, in a midterm election, so, yeah. But what's really great is we are on track to have, so early voting typically accounts, typically accounts for 25% to 28% of total voter turnout. So with the numbers, we're currently on track to hit close to 80% turnout, 78% to 80% turnout if trends pan out. And to put that in context, we typically in midterm elections realize 15% turnout, 15% to 30% turnout in non-presidential elections. In fact, we haven't seen turnout like this since the 2016 presidential election. So Evanston should be very, very proud of our voting habits. I think that wraps up my announcements. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, we're going to move into public comment now. I don't know if I'm going to be getting a list-
Yes.
...with our new electronics.
I'm sorry, I have one more announcement to make regarding voting. So tomorrow, if you need a ride to the polls, and if you know someone needs a ride to the polls, you can utilize Lyft and Uber are offering free rides to the polls on Election Day. So please utilize that. And you can find your local polling location by visiting either, by calling the clerk's office or visiting the county clerk's website. Here's the list. I'll send it to you in two seconds.
Okay. Terrific. And then you'll send it to me, and then you'll keep track on the time, because I like our new system. All right, so we're going to move to public comment. We have 13 people that are signed up for public comment this evening. And as everyone knows, we set aside 45 minutes total for public comment. With less than 15 people, that means each person will get up to three minutes, if you need three minutes. And again, the folks up here at the dais are listening to you. If you've sort of said the same thing before, think about something different to say this time, if you want to get a different point across, or it's okay if you say, hey, you know, you've heard me before, I feel strongly that we shouldn't cut A, B, or C, or we shouldn't raise A, B, and C. So with that, we're going to move on to the comments. Let's see, it's here on my phone now. Drum roll, please, for the first couple speakers. All right. Mike Vasilko is our first one today. Mike, come on up. Then we've got Bea Rashid, then Tony Ray.
So my first comment is that this council has become a record-breaking tax-and-spend council. I do not support any of the levies, taxes, fees, or fines being considered to date by city staff and the council members. They weren't necessary. The social service cuts being proposed were not necessary. I've enumerated many times that the council, that the city could have had a budget surplus had it not been for reoccurring financial waste brought to the council by an inexperienced city staff and approved by council members unwilling to challenge staff recommendations. I wish council members would take financial waste seriously. The second item is, I'd like to know who is challenging spending $30,000 for food and vaccines at the animal shelter. I hope the city is not considering denying food and vaccines for the shelter. The third item is, over the weekend, I sent out to the council members the, a copy of the Page 32 of the proposed budget sheet, which shows an organizational chart. This is the first time I'm, year I'm mentioning it, but it's been something that has been on my mind for every year I look at the budget. The point is that residents and the city clerk are not at the top of the pile. I think that's propaganda, and it certainly looks nice on paper, makes some people feel good, I suppose, but we're certainly not there. The second page, and I'm seriously asking the city council to substitute a page in the budget that's more realistic, possibly the one I sent as an alternative that puts the residents clearly at the bottom of the pile. That's where we feel like we are. Item, lost track. I guess I'd like to know why the city clerk's office, their budget this year for, I guess, automobile use was cut 50%, whereas every other department was cut 5%. It seems to me the council's always picking on the city clerk's office and their expenses, and they carry a bigger burden than anybody else. I'd also like to know why the library director's contract isn't going to be renegotiated sooner than later. She makes over $250,000 a year with benefits, and her auto allowance is $1,100 a month, more than any other, more than the city manager, more than anybody else on the city staff. Lastly, Alderman Saffronin believes that the Harley-Clark matter will come before you for a final vote to decide its fate. I bring this up, this, I believe, is a budget issue. The city manager has previously said, weeks ago and months ago, that there's no reason to bring that back to council. Council gave him permission to negotiate. He's not going to discuss it anymore with council. I'd like to have some reassurance that that's going to come back, because the memorandum of understanding that was put forth by the group that wants to demolish the building does not have enough funds in it to do the work properly or to do all the work that's required. So I'd like some reassurance from the council that that is coming back for a final vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. All right. Next up, we've got Bea Rashid. Is Bea here? I don't see her. Okay, well, when she shows up, we'll bring her up. Are you Tony?
I'm Tony.
Come on up, Tony. Then we've got Meg Crewley, and then Ray Freeman.
Hi, I'm Tony Ray from the 4th Ward. I'm representing interfaith action of Evanston advocacy team, and also joining Forces for Affordable Housing. I just, we just want to say thanks for your good work updating and improving the inclusionary housing ordinance, and thanks to the staff who did really hard work.
Thank you. All right. Do we have Meg? Okay. And then Ray Freeman, and then Jonathan Nusima.
Hi, my name is Meg Crewley, and I'm a resident in the 2nd Ward in Evanston. And I'm here tonight speaking as the president of the District 65 Educators Council, the teachers' union. On behalf of the Evanston Teachers in 65 and District 202, we support keeping Firehouse Number 4 open and ALS Engine 24 in service. We do not support the closing of any fire station in Evanston or reductions of any of its current emergency response vehicles. We believe that closing this firehouse and eliminating the ALS Engine 24 would have a negative impact on the safety of our students in emergency situations. Closing the fire station would absolutely increase response time if there were an emergency situation and reduce to an unsafe level the amount of firefighters available to provide support in emergencies. As public employees serving the families of our city, we strongly urge the city of Evanston to demonstrate its commitment to the welfare of our students and families in Evanston by keeping Firehouse 4 open and ALS Engine 24 in operation. We also are in opposition to any public service cuts that will have any negative impact on the students, communities, and families in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. All right. Ray, then Jonathan, then Eric Passett.
It says Juan, but it's Jeanette.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Council, Clerk Reed. I wanted to be a little bit philosophical tonight about the budget, thinking about it. And after the meeting last week, I have a couple of suggestions that may or may not work, but I figured I would run it by you and see what you think. There seems to be a flaw in the budget discussions and process, being that we haven't had a balanced budget for the past three years, and we participated in your priority-based budget in May. The first question is, what impact has this priority-based, priority-based study had in your decision-making process? Seems to me it would be very helpful to have a budget process committee, but the committee needs to have some decision-making impact. As a matter of fact, I believe all of your boards and commissions and committees should have an equal vote with the council to achieve an impact on all of the final decisions. For all committees and departments, like DAPR Committee, Planning Committee, HHRC, I believe the final vote by city council on any decision that involves a board, commission, or committee, you should allow the department or committee at least one vote, yea or nay. So my first suggestion is to have a budget committee, but one that makes a binding decision. Also, please change the other departments and committees so they can also make binding decisions, so their discussions and votes are not just discussions. Also, please create a format by which the council as a whole can answer the questions that are brought up at meetings through public comment. It could be a committee or a website for responses to public comment. We really need this feedback. It would be greatly appreciated to know that our voices are heard and that we can be part of the process and part of the solution. I believe in looking forward to the next several years, it would be helpful to look back at the last three years to see where the problems were in not being able to balance the budget in 2016, 17, and 18. For now, in order to keep from making those drastic cuts in programs and services, I suggest to cut between 2% and 5% across the board on all spending proposed on your new 2019 budget. Or better yet, let's all work together with all of Evanston residents to create a budget that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, we've got Jonathan Nusima, then Eric Passett.
She might.
Jonathan did, or Eric?
Jonathan.
Jonathan did. Okay. Oh, are you Eric? Come on, come on up, Eric. And then we've got Doreen Price and then Jessica Sales.
Okay. So I'm Eric Passett, and I'm a resident of the 4th Ward and also the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos in Evanston. And, well, I was talking to Alderman Fleming about before the meeting, and I don't think the council's, the main problem with our taxes going up, I think we're all the problem. I don't think anybody wants to give up services. And so if we don't want to give up services, save Harley-Clark, save this, build a new this, build a new that, taxes have to go up. It's a fact. And what I would urge people, all people, to think about, including, every time we raise taxes, we force out affordable housing. It no longer exists in Evanston. If you raise taxes on properties in general, landlords like myself are forced to raise rents. And we are imposed upon way worse than a single homeowner. You tax building owners a lot more than everybody else. It's not, it's just a fact. You know, we are taxed a lot more. So we're forced to raise rents. We have to, to make ends meet, you know? And so if taxes go up, guess what? So do our rents. And it's become a very competitive market out there as far as renting apartments with all the new building, changes at Northwestern. A lot of things are going on to hurt our business. And taxes make it even worse, you know? Then you talk about homeowners. I have so many friends who love to live in Evanston. Guess what they say? Taxes are unreasonable. You know? I could tell you on my modest tales, I pay quite a bit in taxes. I'm sure everybody else does. I'm not the only one. But if they go up again, guess who's forced to move out? You know, so we're going to be in, we're going to be in a city of upper-middle-class people. Where, where's, you know, where does it stop? So we have to cut services in order to not raise, you know, property taxes. If we continue to do that, you know, how many people are going to be able to afford? If you look around, the houses that are not selling in Evanston are the million-plus houses. The million-dollar-plus houses are not selling in Evanston. You know why? The property taxes are way too high. You'll pay $30,000-plus in property taxes if you own a million-dollar house. If you go Womatt or Highland Park, it's not the same. You know, now, I understand our costs are different. We don't have industry. There's a whole bunch of reasons. But we have to cut services, you know, maybe not save Harley-Clark, maybe not build another library. Who knows what it is? But if we don't do something, we're going to push out a whole bunch of people. Maybe not, maybe not myself, but a lot of people I know cannot afford to live in Evanston. Enough of me.
Thank you, Eric. We've got Doreen Price, Jessica Sales, and Jason Hayes.
I love building on what other people are talking about, so I guess that makes me unique enough to be able to speak for three minutes. I hope you smile at that one. In terms of what this gentleman just said, and we spoke beforehand, I respect his opinion about increases in taxes. But having a really, really deep, in-depth look and experience with regard to the need for affordable housing, I can't differ in terms of opinion any more than the fact that we do need these services, and putting them off has gotten us in the bind. We've lost perspective as a society over the 30 years about redistribution of wealth. And we've seen that. And there's stuff in the Wall Street Journal. I've presented at various committees, like at the Housing and Homelessness, and Eleanor Revelle has some of these documents, if you'd like to see them, in terms of these really good articles from the Wall Street Journal and Crane's. And even those business journals are saying that we have a problem with regard to people staying in place or affording homes at the million-dollar level, because that's the middle class, as he mentions, that you need two people making $300,000, in this one article by Crane's, on the problem with regard to people being able to afford homes and get an increased transfer tax. With regard to the transfer tax, I think it's a city duty for people who are blessed with a little bit more extra income, especially over the years when they weren't asked to give locally, to consider giving locally, which is part of the article in the Crane's article, if people want to read that. In terms of the Wall Street Journal, you can see that the equity is not back up yet, so the people who were relying on that, this is what we are doing that's very responsible. We're not the people who are needing help because we have not been responsible with our money. I think there's a lot of prejudices out there in terms of who does need the money and why. And it looks like from our discussions today at a joining forces meeting, that there is some really strong argument that applies to every single person living here, regardless of age or whatever. And that was really revealing when we went through a lot of examples to see who fell through. Everyone fell through. And in terms of the more immediate needs, you can save money by helping people rehab and trying to encourage realtors who are looking for flips, to actually encourage people to, and by some incentive or some tax, which will also bring in income to help with affordable housing. But you have to start including the single-family homes, which in the Durham article, which I brought to you earlier, which I am repeating for sake of clarity for some, that it's important to the black community. And I checked with my black friends, and it just wasn't just my black friends, but it's everybody that was in Durham that was affected by decisions that were made that weren't concerning of equity. Our RHO, our RHO was approved without having an equity framework, and even though it was said it was needed, it was approved anyway. Having two apartments that are different from each other because someone is poor is really immoral. And I think all our things that we decide as a community should be evergreen, and as we gain more knowledge and more experience, and as we listen to the community, that should be a new mode of business. And things shouldn't be in cement, causing problems, especially as climate change and everything else changes with our demands and needs. So I think we should avoid problems, avoid litigation by being good to people and using that as a basis of our budget, which means the other things that can wait, let them wait, and pay attention to all the other things which has been suggested before, and I fully endorse. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. We've got Jessica Sales, then Jason Hayes, then Jeanette Rizki.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep this short and sweet tonight. We all know that we're at the business end of this budget. It's been really long. You've heard from myself and so many others. So for me tonight, there is no impassioned pleas. Instead, I just want to, first of all, give thanks, especially to a lot of the aldermen who have been really vocal in coming out for support for the mental health board and for Health and Human Services. So please know that that has been noticed and really appreciated. I just want to touch on at the last meeting when we had Director Thomas Smith here, and she was talking about staff shortages in the Health Department and the ramifications that that has particularly for grant writing. She mentioned that due to staff shortages, there is nobody who is actively researching for grants and writing. And that kind of gave me the idea about a way that the Mental Health Board could be utilized to facilitate and assist in some of that work. I reached out to City Manager Bob Kowitz and Director Thomas Smith with a proposal about collaborating with the Mental Health Board to get some of these grants written. We have a really strong board of eight mental health professionals, five social workers, a psychologist, a psychiatrist, and a member with an MBA. And I guess my plea is, like, put us to work. If this grant writing needs to be done, and there's the potential to secure additional revenue, and the city is short-staffed, I would really welcome the opportunity to get some of that work done. So I appreciate the reply from City Manager and the Director that they're really open to that. So I just wanted to let you guys know about that. And then finally, when we're talking figures, the Mental Health Board is facing a 33% cut, so that's $250,000. So when I think of 33%, I think of a three-legged bar stool. So essentially, it's cutting the leg off a bar stool. So it's still a bar stool. It's maybe just not as effective, and it probably doesn't do the job as well. I understand that if a cut has to happen, then that's part of the game. I would suggest maybe a smaller cut if that had to happen. A 5% to 10% cut would be roughly $30,000 to $70,000, which is still significant, but I don't believe it would be as paralyzing to the board. It would give the board a good 12 months to really regroup, look at our funding priorities, chat with our agencies, and just give them some heads up that they're going to have to work to find some additional revenue. So appreciate your time, appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you for the suggestion with the Mental Health Board. Great. All right. Next up, we've got Jason Hayes, and then Jeanette Rizki, then Mary Rizinsky is the last one, signed up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council. My name's Jason Hayes. I'm a resident of the 8th Ward. I'm also a member of Evanston Firefighters Local 742. And I'm angry. I'm angry that this is the second time in my own career that this city manager has decided to put a budget out where he is cutting the fire department when our utilization is up constantly, consistently, and that this was a budget issue that feels like it was sprung on the community. Nothing of this was brought up in anything in the priority-based budgeting surveys that went out. Nothing of anything near the direct impact on the citizens of this community was presented in advance of this budget. Now, I understand that cuts need to be made. I get that. I'm a resident. I pay my taxes. It affects everything. But when you're talking about also making cuts to social service programs, who picks that up? We do. We are not only fire suppression and emergency medical services, we are sometimes people's only medical service. So I want you all to think very hard about this. There is no way that this department can continue to serve the people of this community with a 20% reduction of our effective force. There is no way that we can respond to over 10,000 calls a year with a 20% reduction in our response area, in our personnel, in our abilities. Not only does that affect the people that I live with, it affects the men and women that I work with. You're putting our lives at risk, putting our lives at stake. Response times, staffing are important. There are reasons we have firehouses laid out the way they are. There are reasons we have staffing laid out the way it is. This is not something that is a wish. We're already technically understaffed, and we make it work, because that's important. It's important to make it work. 20% cut, that doesn't work. There's no way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. We've got Jeanette Rizki, then Mary Rizinsky.
I think we need to be clear here. What's caused this budget crisis? I mean, I heard one speaker suggest Harley-Clark is a luxury and all this, but forget Harley-Clark. It's $6 million in a James Park lawsuit. It's $1 million in the Robinson lawsuit, which Mr. Bob Kowitz was involved in. This is where the money's gone. It's in all the screw-ups in the capital projects, and amounts to millions of dollars. It's waste on Howard Street. It's all these things. And I see something else even on the coming agenda where we've got some issues of waste, and we'll talk about it at that meeting. But it just continues and continues and continues. And, you know, the firefighters are right. I did ask if we could run this thing on overtime. I was told by some people, yes, they could run it at $200,000, so it's possible. But I don't know if that's good or not to run it and let them work a lot of overtime. And the police have been cut too. This guy, basically, he said, oh, I did a study. Well, the study is, like they said, it's an overview. It didn't do anything. And he's cut the police department down too. So it's the same problem. I mean, nothing's been done with any thought, any numbers, anything that does anything for the community. And he cut the Health Department, and he pretends that, oh, it wasn't a problem. We just had some miscommunication. He didn't know what he was doing. That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line here. We are just cutting things to make numbers. So keep making the numbers. And guess what? We have a big tax increase. I think I've said it many, many times now. What this all amounts to is 30% to 50%. 17% this year is what you're looking at, and 2020, you're looking at the same thing. That's over 30%. And given all the other problems, and who knows what is hiding in the budget, because it looks like they're underestimating legal fees by $2 million. That's what a couple of us are starting to see. So all this is coming, again, because nothing's been fixed. And, you know, I'm very concerned about the new police chief, because Mr. Bob Kowitz does not hire quality people. Everybody he seems to hire seems to be at a mid-range level. They're not quality. I'm sorry to say. And everyone I've seen him hire here is nothing but a bunch of people that report to him that, I'm sorry, we have not brought in any quality people in the last four or five years here. And, you know, frankly, I see that. And you can just look at it. So, you know, you can laugh, you can, you know, pretend, but you've got a big mess here. And, you know, and you're responsible. And the voters are, I think the voters are hearing it. The voters are seeing it, and they know it. So as far as crossing guards, that's just a scheme to dump them out of the responsibility. Nobody will take care of these guards if they're missing. I saw that. I realize that. That's the scheme here on that. I heard if Mr. Vasilko is correct, we're going to cut something else. And the other thing is, we don't, we have six directors here that basically you subsidize their cars. You basically give them a car a year. I think that's unnecessary. A $400 car allowance for people that work here in the Civic Center is unnecessary. It should be cut. And frankly, it's, all this waste here is what's the problem. It's not Harley-Clark. Harley-Clark hasn't cost the taxpayers any money. You can keep pretending those things cost money. The real things that cost money are- The real things that cost money are all this other stuff. Thank you.
All right. Mary Rzinski is our last speaker tonight. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Hi. I actually came here to speak about something, but I want to say first of all, a couple of people have referred to Harley Clark. And Harley Clark is not a budget item. And no one in the groups that I've been involved in is asking for city money. And with the election tomorrow, I just want to make that really, really clear. So it's just a red herring when it comes up from people saying that it's a stress on the budget. Because what I really came here to say, and actually, I had one other thing regarding that. Harley Clark actually would create jobs and bring in tax dollars. And if you just let people go to town with it, and not the city and not city staff, but volunteers who are experts in their field, you may actually see a revenue source coming in that brings people to our town to use other facilities. But what I really came here to say is, I first of all, agree with everyone who spoke ahead of us, ahead of me, but I think it would be a really huge mistake to close the fire station. We have a high school right over there. We have a lot of people in that ward that really rely on it. And it seems like, like Mr. Hayes said, it came out of nowhere. And I think that our budget problems seem to come from lack of long-term planning. And I'm really curious, when we can have honest budget meetings, not with you guys up there and us over here, but where we sit down and answer some of these questions. We need a three-, five-, 10-year program because we've got debt service coming at us, and we need to figure out how the heck we're going to manage that, and we're not going to build ourselves out of it. We're not going to parking ticket ourselves out of this. It's going to take some creative planning. And I mean, we have, I see on the budget, I'm trying to understand it, I printed it up, but I see $1 million in 2017 going from a TIF district for a theater. And then this year, I see $1 million coming from the general fund to that theater. And then I see money from the general bond going there. And I'd like to be able to see how money flows in this town and what it means if we say in 2017 that there's $1 million in TIF districts for a project, does it mean the money's there? So I'm asking, we need some real answers. We need people to be able to sit down with experts, with you and Sherrod, and say, hey, this is how our budget works. Because I'm not sure anyone really understands. So thank you. I know it's a challenge, and I hope we can get through this, but please don't close Fire Station 4.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. I've got a couple, a couple...
One more thing. I apologize.
You have 30 more seconds.
I only take 30 seconds. One thing I found out about the fire people, we have 26 fire people who each pay $15 of their own dollar to go buy food for themselves. So that's 26 times 15, that's $390 a day they spend here. And then they go to Evanston grocery stores. And so at the end of the year, these guys are spending $142,000 of their own dollars. So when you see them in the grocery store, that's not taxpayer dollar they're using. And they're paying, basically, we have to get taxes on that too. So remember that when you think about cutting them. These guys are here, they're giving to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've got a couple, I've got a couple lights here, so I'm going to go there, and then we're going to get to special order business. So City Manager Bob Kowitz.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you all know, the council's rules prohibit the council from responding to public speakers. And certainly, we're blessed in Evanston to have many public speakers share their mind. I must, however, this evening, take issue with one of the public speakers referring to the city staff. We have a collection of men and women who are outstanding, who come to work every single day, skilled professionals, working very hard in sometimes very difficult conditions, being criticized, being looked at in ways that many municipal professionals, nowhere else in the country, really find themselves. And so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to correct the statements that the individuals that we have working here are some of the finest public servants, professionals that we have. We are all fortunate and honored to work in this community. The downside unfortunately is the constant scrutiny and the spreading of false and incomplete information. It's something we face as a country, which is very, very sad. But, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me have the opportunity this evening to correct at least that one point of many misstatements and mistruths that are often stated here by members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Alderman Rainey.
Yes. Well, I don't want you to correct anybody, but I do think the time has come for people to stop wasting their time at the microphone blaming Howard Street and the theater for our budget woes. So could you please explain, because nobody trusts me, could you please explain, could you please explain how a TIF district works, how increment works, and how bonding for TIF district projects work? And then I will add one little thing. If it weren't for bonding, you would not have a theater, a hotel, nothing on Maple Street downtown, a parking garage. We bonded for, we budgeted a budget of $23 million for infrastructure in the downtown, it was called at the time, the Research Park TIF. We budgeted $23 million for infrastructure. That, there wasn't, there wasn't $23. That was the biggest vacant lot in the United States of America when we started. You bond and you pay it back with the increment. So could you just explain very specifically about the theater? Because it also goes to the failure of Peckish Pig and the failure of Ward Eight and, you know, the upcoming failure of the theater. Not, not happening. Those things are making money for this, for this city because the real estate, the original real estate taxes, liquor fees, liquor sales taxes, those don't go into the increment. Those don't become increment. They come to the city. And it's very, very helpful. So just zero in on the theater.
Certainly. The city of Evanston's been extraordinarily successful in TIFs, and Alderman Rainey is referring to what is known as the Howard Ridge TIF. This project was started many years ago. Way tax increment financing works is you freeze the amount of tax revenue that are, that comes into a particular geographic area. As the property is improved and the value of the property increases, that increase goes directly into the TIF district. And those monies, and this is probably the most important part of all, those monies can only be spent within the TIF district. They're not general funds available to the city. They have to be spent on infrastructure. They have to be spent on businesses in the TIF district. And so, the Howard Ridge TIF was very fortunate to have a nice, tall, successful apartment building built at 415 Howard. That successful apartment building has generated a fair amount of tax increment finance dollars, which has then gone into the city's work on Howard Street, which has included Peckish Pig, which has included Ward Eight, which has included the Theo Ubiqui Theater. When the TIF is finished, all of those monies will have been paid back, and the increased dollar amounts of values of those properties then go back on the tax rolls. As we've talked through this budget process, we are having a TIF end at the end of this year. Mr. Desai, if you please correct me on this number, but what, the total amount of tax revenue just coming back to the city of Evanston annually now will be in excess of $1 million, correct? That's not counting the money that is also going to District 65, District 202, all the other taxing jurisdictions. So because of the success of the Washington National TIF, the city of Evanston will enjoy over $1 million of additional revenue. I don't want to say forever, but certainly for the long-distance future. And as you look at the success of the Howard Ridge TIF, the Howard Hartree TIF, we never talk about Howard Hartree, but that was classic tax increment financing, helping clear industrial buildings for some of the most successful retail that the city of Evanston has, the Dempster Dodge TIF that really transformed a dead center. Again, we don't talk much about that, but that center is thriving today because the city council had the foresight to create a tax increment finance district, which was allowed to issue debt, that was allowed to help bring Valley in, so they made the necessary improvements, bought the center. So tax increment financing has been extraordinarily successful. The Downtown Two TIF, I believe when it closed a few years ago, there were articles written throughout America. It was one of the most successful tax increment financing districts, not only in the state of Illinois, but in the United States. So for those to come to the podium and say that money is misspent is completely inaccurate. It has been spent exactly under the statutes of Illinois law, has been spent exactly as the city council, many city councils over the past have done. And because the city has been as forthright and as forththinking with tax increment financing districts, we have not seen the blight just with the grocery stores. How many Dominixes that closed were left empty? This city council created a TIF, what, 18 months, 24 months before that unforeseen closure happened because the city council saw the need to invest in that center. So there's countless examples, the work that's been done on Howard Street, time and time again, an example of exactly how redevelopment, economic development works.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, there was one speaker who mentioned that she was concerned and feeling that there was a disconnect between the council and citizens over the budget, that it didn't seem user-friendly between those of us on the dais and the audience. Could you just, we've been talking about almost nothing else since April, I think. And I think all of us at every single ward meeting we've had have had budget conversations. Mr. City Manager, could you just tell us how many public meetings there have been? But most importantly, personally, where you've gone in the community and engaged people one-to-one? I want people to feel that they can come and get answers directly without having to stand up at the...
Absolutely, Alderman. Fisk, members of the council, I'll start most recent and work backwards. So once the budget was issued, I conducted 11 public meetings over the course of two and a half weeks, one in every ward, where people came out everywhere, from Alderman Braithwaite hosting beer and budget at Temperance to, we had, we were at the downtown Starbucks and had Channel 7 reporting from the outside because Starbucks wouldn't let them in. You know, and really everywhere in between. Prior to that, we had an evening budget event where we had multiple locations spread out around the community before we issued the budget, where people could either come to the Civic Center or come to, I think it was three or four other sites around the community. We did the priority-based budgeting process. One of the challenges with priority-based budgeting unfortunately is that we learned a lot, but we also learned that people like everything. And so it was not as instructive as I had hoped it would be, and it had led to cuts that we've been talking about with police and fire. This is something we've been talking about for the last 12, 18 months. I think we're lucky to see the same seven, eight people, week in and week out. Our challenge is, there's 74,900 other residents of Evanston who either choose not to participate or come to one of these other meetings. And I think it's a challenge that when people want to come to the council, they see the vitriol that is sometimes here. And I think that that discourages many of the 74,000 folks that we don't see. So we do reach out, and it's a challenge. We need to live within our resources. No one is happy, certainly none of your staff certainly is happy to propose any of these issues. But we are working hard. We are communicating with the public. We're all, many of the staff are very active in national groups, many of the council members are active in national groups. We compare our processes to others, and I, it's very difficult to find communities doing more. They do pieces of what we do, but there are very few communities who do all the various things that we do to reach out to folks. So when this budget is over, we'll do it again next year, and we'll do it during the year. Mayor Haggerty's having, what, your second Facebook Town Hall coming up this week after one during the budget cycle. We've used social media. We're in different locations around the community. So we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Molly, and thank you, Alderman. All right, let's get into the budget. What I would propose for our discussion today is I thought the end of the last meeting went pretty well because we had a structured approach. To go through it, I'd like to suggest the same. Last time, if you guys all recall, we ended having gone through the revenue side, and we basically took it by the large categories. I'd like to do the same thing and go through the expense reduction side. The purpose of this is that per the last meeting, we are going through this exercise so everyone at this, up here at the dais, has an opportunity to, you know, get their input heard because we've asked the city manager to come back to us at our next meeting, which is Monday, November 12, with sort of a budget 2.0, okay? With a revised budget for us to ponder and to make some final, you know, straw votes on as we, as we get to the end of this process. So that's what I would, I would suggest, that we follow that structure. One thing that I would suggest first is, I think there may have been some outstanding questions that we raised on the revenue side, City Manager, so that we address those first, and then let's go into the expense line item. I do have one light on. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was going to go to that. We had some budget memos in response to our questions from last night. Will we go over that?
Let's do that.
After the expenses?
Yeah. City Manager, how do you want to do that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Rainey, we did come out with an additional 14 budget memos at the end of last week, numbers 60 through 74, beginning on page 199 of the budget memo, budget document. Hopefully, they're self-explanatory if there are additional questions. Perhaps, Mr. Mayor, would you like to answer them now? Should we go through the expenditure side and then come back at the end? What would be your preference?
We can do that. Let's go right in, since we did revenue, let's go right into the expense side, taking it by the big categories here. You can sort of walk through, and then we'll open it to conversation, then we'll move to the next ones, and then we'll open it up for the budget memos and questions that people have in the revenue side.
So we'll start with the city manager's office. Many of these we have already discussed, but the first is the elimination of the cultural arts coordinator. So that is a layoff position. Next is the elimination of the cultural arts administration program cost. You've heard from some public speakers concern about this regarding, this is, a portion of this is the money that's been used for grants that the cultural arts committee uses. So that is being eliminated here. Next is the elimination of an administrative assistant in the city manager's office. This position supports the assistant city manager as well as provides general support for our office, provides staffing to some boards and commissions. We would consolidate the work of this position with another administrative assistant who currently serves the finance division, which is also part of the city manager's office, with that elimination. Next is an elimination of accountant position. We've been talking a lot about data. We've been talking a lot about using systems. We feel comfortable with the extended use of those types of systems that we can move forward without a lone accountant position. Next is the elimination of administrative adjudication aide. This position has been vacant to assist with our administrative adjudication operation. The position has been vacant for the balance of the year, and so we've been able to move forward with that. And so we believe that we can continue to do that. That's also combined with a reduction in the administrative adjudication judges. As you know, the judges are contract employees. We expect to see a decrease under the current configuration of administrative adjudication tickets due to the loss of cell phone citations. Next year, the state of Illinois will be the only jurisdiction able to issue those tickets. We had been issuing cell phone citations as a municipal ordinance violation. We will no longer be able to do that. Next is the...
The way you said it may sound like we can't write tickets.
We will, the city will no longer be able to write city tickets. We will only be able to write tickets to the state code, and that is then adjudicated by Cook County. So any fines associated with cell phone citations which previously had come to the city of Evanston will now come to Cook County. We will still write the tickets. We will not be deterred.
It's like an unfunded mandate.
It's like an unfunded mandate. We will still write the tickets in the name of public safety despite the fact that we will no longer enjoy the fees for those violators. Next is the elimination of a budget and finance manager. Again, this is a layoff position. It's been my concern that we need to have a... It's been my concern that we need to have a position that is not quite as broad as that to focus specifically on the preparation of the budget and the monitoring of the current year budget. So as you'll notice, underneath that is the addition of a budget coordinator position. So our plan would be to move forward to fill the budget coordinator position, have that position focus, again, on budget preparation and budget management, and then the other duties of the budget and finance manager would be assumed by the chief financial officer. Additional funding for debt collection, we have talked about this in other meetings. We have recently entered into a contract with a new firm to do debt collection for us. This money will help us pay for some additional staff that will help coordinate the work of the contractor for debt collection. And then the last item in the city manager's office is a transfer of a $20,000 cost to the fire pension fund. This is a outside contract dealing with the administration of the fire pension fund, and those costs would be shifted from the general fund to the fire pension fund. So those are the changes proposed in the city manager's office.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about these items or questions people want to bring up about the city manager's office? Okay, seeing none, Alderman Revelle?
Well, I guess I would like to speak for the arts programming. I think arts are really important to the fabric of our community. They are part of our, they contribute to the economy through job creation, and I just, since these are straw votes, and I'd like us to not, I'd like us to keep this on our drawing board for consideration. One thing that came to, in the mail just recently, was, is a picture of a wonderful mural that's at the Martin Luther King Literary and Fine Arts School. I'm not used to their full title yet. It's a wonderful mural that got partial funding from the Evanston Arts Council. I don't, it's, I can't pass this around the whole audience, but "Our Lives Are Different and Yet the Same: Once You Learn to Read, You Will Be Free Forever." I mean, it's wonderful, and then wonderful pictures of, that shows the variety of kids in the school. It's a beautiful thing, and we've, I know the 7th Ward has really benefited from having a new mural on its, on the viaduct at Green Bay Road. I just would like to speak for the arts.
Thank you, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Wen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to add my voice to restoring the program costs for the arts programs. I've heard from many, many people in the community about the value of these programs. It's frequently seed money that these different programs can then use to obtain other larger grants, and there isn't a part of Evanston that hasn't benefited from the arts. And we've really, we are a community that values art, that many artists come to practice their art, and I think it's really critically important that we spend this money. We know the benefit of the arts in terms of helping people express themselves in ways that they can't in other, necessarily in other ways, and the ways that it allows us to connect with each other. So I think this $50,000 is definitely far more impactful than the dollars that are there.
Great, thank you, Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson, and Alderman Russ Simmons.
And I agree with, I agree with all of that. I think the other maybe part that, I don't want to say it's overlooked, but you can't underestimate is the fact that the way that the money is utilized really goes a long way to improving just the ordinary built environment that's around us. So I think that there is a very, very significant collateral benefit to the businesses and, you know, the walk to school, the viaducts. The viaducts are, you know, they've historically just been so awful, and, you know, granted the bridges aren't painted, but just improving that space, it really goes a long way, and I think that enhances the built environment. I still kind of stand by what I talk, I want to talk about these things, I don't want to do the votes, but, you know, if the money can be, you know, found, that would be something I feel like would personally be, you know, something I'd like to see.
Great, thank you, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Russ Simmons, and Alderman Rainey.
To add to Alderman Wilson, absolutely, the improvements that the public art has been able to make, particularly in our ward and a pretty eyesore of a viaduct, and also the opportunity to show public art that our young people are able to identify with in their communities. I appreciate what's happening with the arts. Again, we have so much to discuss, but that's something that I'll be thinking about as we make votes on this.
Great, thank you, Alderman Russ Simmons, Alderman Rainey, and then Alderman Fleming.
Well, the public art is wonderful, and I'd like to get some more, but the performing arts also are very influential as far as economic development and the excitement that it brings to the city. And I'm thinking of Dance Center Evanston, which really added a boost to the shopping center at Dempster and Dodge once they were allowed to expand, and that was because of Valley that they were allowed to expand. They tried to do that for about eight years before that. And also, the merchants on Howard Street and the neighbors are just very excited about the prospect of a performing arts theater on Howard Street. That adds to people's livelihood in terms of employment, but also they're going to be hiring caterers for every single performance and have a liquor license, and people are going to, you know, be up and down the street even more, adds to Valley parking. So, I mean, there's all sorts of effects of the arts, and I think $50,000, we can cover it with the advantages of having the arts in Evanston.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming?
So I guess my hesitation would be, not that I don't like art, but Alderman Wen mentioned the art beautifying the whole city, and I can say that there was no art in the 9th Ward until I took office and advocated for a year for art in the 9th Ward. So I know we have new art council or arts committee members, and I think that they're more attuned to that, but if we are going to spend the money, then the art needs to be placed all around the city without an Alderman advocating for a year. My other concern is if we do put back money, I know I spoke with the arts council chair, you know, they don't, they don't have a staff anymore. And I'm not saying that we need to put the staff back there, but I think we need to be mindful, if we put the arts money back in and they don't have a designated staff, then we're putting that job onto another one of our staff here already in the city. I think Paulina is working on it now. And the other issue is, I think, just being mindful and talking to them, they're volunteers like all of our other committee members, and while they're committed to the arts, I don't know that, you know, I think it's just worth another conversation to see what they can take on as a volunteer committee, if we're giving them funds and asking them to, you know, roll out whatever projects, do they, you know, have the time to take that on? Because, you know, particularly dealing with like CTA and mural, that has been a lot of work, and I don't know that a volunteer group can take that work on. So I just want to be mindful of those other impacts of having this art fund and actually getting the arts up does take some work, so we want to make sure we're not putting that burden on another staff who's already doing a full-time job.
Great, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Okay, City Manager, I think we've had some robust discussion there. We've got something else from Alderman Russ Simmons.
Do we have a memo that includes what that would look like if we kept the program budget and the work was dispersed among existing staff? There is one, okay.
And the plan, Alderman Russ Simmons, members of the council, Paulina Martinez, the assistant to the city manager, would take on the staffing role of the committee. They have indicated their willingness to take on some more responsibilities. I think it can work.
When you say "they," you mean the arts council?
The arts council, yes.
Okay, all right. So I think Alderman Fleming's point is a good one, if some of that money or all that money is restored there, again, in the overall picture of this entire budget and how you do it, that it actually can be managed, you know, effectively and efficiently. You gotta, we gotta figure that out since we don't have a cultural arts director.
And I think in my discussions with the arts council, one of the challenges is just the sheer number of grants for such a small amount of money. And I think that they understand that perhaps a fewer number of grants, slightly larger, will be more impactful with art organizations, but will also be much easier to manage administratively. So I think there's a middle ground.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Yeah, just to add to that, I've heard from two very active members in my ward that are a part of the arts council that are very, if they have to do it without a coordinator, they're willing to move forward, but they did stress the need for the additional dollars to keep them moving.
Great, thank you. All right, let's move on to the law department, City Manager.
The law department, this is the elimination of one position and the creation of another, again, a downsizing of this position. The position will continue to support the Liquor Control Board, but will also have skills and abilities to support an ever-growing list of responsibilities and cases in the law department. So we feel that this is a good change.
Okay, any discussion there with the law department? I think it's, I think it's worth just discussing so the public and other people can understand. So within the law department, right, come lawsuits to the city. It's been referenced several times about payouts, you know, that the city has made in the past. Can you discuss from a budgeting standpoint, so everybody up here and at home and in the city understands, how the city budgets for situations where there may be a lawsuit or a settlement on the, on the part of the city? And again, just so everybody at home and out here understands, when settlements are made, it's a business decision that's being made, you know, in executive session by the council, weighing all sorts of, you know, risks and chance of winning in court and everything, and those aren't easy decisions, and those decisions are made. And there's a litany of claims, from workers' comp claims to personnel issues to other things. So can you just talk a little about how we go ahead as a city and budget, you know, for such costs?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first and foremost, the activity of these claims and these costs come through a separate fund. So the general fund does not bear those costs, it is borne through an insurance fund. The insurance fund, it has various components to it. First, it deals with workers' compensation. We have excess liability associated with that, but there is a portion of the insurance fund that deals with workers' compensation. There is another that deals with liability, and we see liability in all shapes and sizes. So from trips and falls to people running into or being run into pieces of city property to workplace claims, use of force claims, issues with the police department, issues with the fire department, those all run through the insurance fund. We're also, as this has been mentioned many times, also dealing with a claim of contamination in a portion of the community which has cost us a significant amount of money. So all of that is contained within the insurance fund. The law department, Corporation Counsel Mason Cup and her staff will work with Mr. Desai and his staff to evaluate the liabilities. There are funds that are put aside on paper as contingencies for potential liabilities. We also have out-of-cash costs, out-of-pocket cost, cash costs for legal representation. We also have costs associated with settlements that are not covered by any kind of third-party, either through workers' compensation or excess liability. So all that runs through the insurance fund. A decision is made once Mr. Desai and Ms. Mason Cup have kind of looked at the situation as to what the cash needs of the fund are. There are transfers made annually to, from the general fund to the insurance fund, and the fund does carry a deficit currently, and we will continue to monitor that. I think once we have a better sense of certainly the James Park litigation, that will give us a better path to recommendations to the city council on the future issues regarding the insurance fund.
All right, thank you, thank you, City Manager. I've got several lights. Alderman Russ Simmons?
Thank you. Will our newest hire in the law department help us have the skill set in-house to manage some of the outside legal fees? Is that an expectation?
Yes, it is. She came to us from the city of Chicago, it was Corporation Counsel office. She spent most of her career working with cases involving the Chicago Police Department, so she is already at work representing the city's interests in similar type cases here. We have dramatically reduced the cost of outside counsel for those members of the city council who have been here for any length of time. You will know that we have saved hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on outside counsel for what I would consider sort of bread and butter cases that every municipality has to face. So, you know, having litigators on staff helps us with that. We generally, unfortunately, do have cases that require expertise beyond the scope of the law department. Ms. Mason Cup, part of her job is to manage those outside lawyers. We report, as you know regularly, to the city council about costs associated with that, so she's very mindful. But to have that core group of attorneys on staff, it's the, it's the least expensive, high-quality legal representation we can have is to, is to have good lawyers on staff, and I think the mix that we have right now between civil attorneys and litigators makes sense.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Braithwaite.
A bunch of the points were covered. I guess one of the things I just did want to stress is this, the fact that we, we've undertaken to proceed with this litigation involving the James Park environmental issues. And contrary to a lot of things we see in the news where communities ignore potential problems, we're taking this, you know, head-on and trying to address the potential problems. And so to me, it's a, it's a bit ironic that people are complaining that we're trying to protect them and the environment, but, you know, I would prefer to not have to spend this money, but I think collectively we've made a decision that it's more important to protect our community and be willing to make that investment to ensure that everybody is well protected, and that, you know, the testing costs are extensive. But, you know, we have excellent water supply, and we want to make sure we keep it that way, and we don't want anything from the outside harming that, so we've made a commitment to that.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. So I Googled our insurance fund just to understand how much money's in that fund. So the one report that I found was just back in December of 2017, line 605, so there was $14 million showing for the revenue at the end of the year, and then it shows $15 million coming out. So my two questions are, where do the revenues that, where do we get the revenues for the insurance fund? And then where can I find in our budget to show what the current revenue and expenses are that are budgeted for this year? I think one of our residents mentioned that we've only budgeted $250, and I'm just, I want to fact-check that.
Mr. Desai can come up and give you the page numbers of the budget that address the insurance fund at the fund level, but the revenues to the insurance fund largely come from the general fund. There are occasions where cases are settled in our benefit, and we are reimbursed from, for costs associated with them, but unfortunately, those are pretty few and far between. Mr. Desai, do you want to speak more broadly to the insurance fund?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, the insurance fund mostly gets the money through the transfers from general fund, but besides what we booked there as a revenue is the transfer from other funds, like the health insurance fund. We pay roughly over a million dollar in our premium cost, but all other departments, like including general fund, water sewer fund, where the employees are charged, they transfer the money. Same thing for the workers' comp and general liability insurance, the, all the departments do the transfers. So these are the transfers which makes up for the revenue of the insurance fund. On the expense side, as the manager, Bob, who has earlier mentioned, that all the expenses run through the insurance fund. So any payments of the workers' comp claims, general liability claims, and the biggest cost in the insurance fund is the health insurance cost. So those are the three major expenses in the insurance fund.
So on the, if you don't have it memorized, that's fine, I can find out afterwards. What page?
Let's see.
186, thank you.
Yes.
186.
Yes, page 186. Whoops, it actually starts on page 185. And I think as we have reported... And I think as we have reported, the fund continues to run a deficit.
Right.
And the deficit right now on that fund?
We are projecting a year-end 2018 deficit of $5.6 million and a proposed deficit in 2019 of $5.6 million. Correct, Mr. Desai?
Yes. I mean, it could go higher because of the couple of big bills for the James Park. So 18 estimated could, yeah, go higher than what we have, the numbers, which is almost like a six weeks old.
Unless there's other questions, Mr. Mayor, regarding the law department. Ms. Starley, the Assistant City Manager, is the Director of the Administrative Services Department, so perhaps she could come to the podium just in case there's any questions. There are a number of changes with some staff positions, an elimination of a facility maintenance worker, one, that would be supporting city facility maintenance, an elimination of a junior mechanic, a half-time position, reduction of this position is a reduction in the fleet fund, is that correct?
That is correct. It's a reduction in the transfer.
Elimination of the Fleet Operations Coordinator, that is also a reduction in the transfer to the fleet fund. So again, the fleet fund is, in many cases, like any of our other enterprise funds, where revenue comes to it from users. And so when we are saying reduce the transfer, the general fund transfers dollars each year to the fleet fund to support the operations of the fleet that is assigned to the general fund. An addition of a full-time mechanic, and Ms. Starley, I believe, you view the 87.5 addition in the 109.25 as sort of an offsetting add or subtract, is that correct?
That's correct.
The addition of .53 FTE payroll clerk, perhaps you could explain that?
Sure. So we have a reduction of a full-time payroll clerk. We're proposing to take that position, make it a part-time position, and then get some extra help from the accounting clerk in finance to cover those operations.
And more and more departments are responsible for all of their payroll, for entry, either individual employees or groups of employees. And so the need for centralized payroll processing over time has decreased, is that correct?
That's correct.
Additional funding for facility and building maintenance materials, I think we've talked about this as well, that as our buildings and facilities citywide age, we find more and more needing materials to help with those repairs. So this is $100,000 that would be spent citywide. A credit monitoring employee benefit, we've had several breaches of various softwares that we contract use for, and it was actually my decision that we should offer this as an ongoing employee benefit, that rather than dealing with each breach separately, each vendor has a different approach to this, that as an employee of the city of Evanston, we would much rather say, here is a service that will monitor any breach in the future and not have to depend on the third-party coverage. As I think at this point, Ms. Starley, what, minimum of two previous breaches where we have worked with the vendor to provide some level of coverage, each coverage is a little bit different. We have to, the employees have to then sign up for that individual coverage, which lasts for varying periods of time. We would much rather simply say there's something in place as an employee benefit. Next, the funding of a management analyst currently in the general fund to the parking fund. This management analyst is supported operations within the entire Ministry of Services Department. We have come to see the need to have that service, that skill set, supporting our parking operations. So we're proposing to move the funding of that position, which the lion's share of their work currently is the parking operation, to the parking fund. An increased cost of our Google renewal, a few years ago, if you recall, we moved from standalone Microsoft Outlook email and calendar and many servers that we were storing data on and entered into an agreement with Google. This will now be the first year continuing from that initial agreement. So this is an increase in our costs. Still, the cost savings to the city, not only from the operation of our own email server, but also the other storage capacity, which is, if not unlimited, nearly unlimited from Google. So it has allowed us to replace several physical servers and the associated costs with that. So that small increase is well offset by operational savings. Vehicle leasing, the council, through the party-based budgeting process, I think, actually pointed out the importance of looking at third parties to lease vehicles with. We have been in discussions, I know, Mr. Desai, with Enterprise Rental Car, about the abilities to rent from them. So we are proposing to move forward with some vehicle leasing to start, which we anticipate will be a reduction in the transfer to the fleet fund of $25,000 for next year. And then finally, the Ministry of Services Department, through the Information Technology Division, is responsible for outdoor security cameras, and we are looking to increase the budget there. There are a series of needs citywide with outdoor security cameras, from the need to replace them completely, to replace their internet connectivity. We have cameras that range in age, I would imagine, from probably 12 or 15 years, and with technology that has been long ago upgraded and made cheaper, better, smaller. And we are committed in order to have the cameras be regularly available with the reduced maintenance costs to invest $35,000 more in cameras. And so that's the Ministry of Services Department.
Thank you, thank you. Erica, stay up there for a little bit, we've got a few lights on. Alderman R. Simmons and Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. Can you, just a super quick history of this junior mechanic position, and was there ever a partnership with the high school with that position? Was it for a, like, youth and young adult, or just more of a entry-level position for mechanic?
Last, two years ago, we had an idea to expand the apprenticeship program that currently exists in Public Works to the Fleet Division. Certainly, there's a shortage of competent, capable mechanics, and we thought we could grow, you know, people into this field through the apprenticeship program. Back then, Mr. Voss was the division manager of the division. We did have luck with the high school. We had one gentleman who worked with us for the summer and then part-time for a year, but then he left, graduated, and then we had not secured anybody in the last year for that position. So that has been vacant for the last year. Certainly a valuable program, but in a time of budget, we put it up there for proposed elimination, simply because we hadn't filled it in the last year.
And I think an improved economy makes the positions harder, because people who have skills and abilities, those skills are highly sought after, especially here in the Chicago area. So I think that perhaps has contributed more than anything to the inability to fill the position, is that those individuals from the high school generally have jobs waiting for them or are involved. I know Mr. Fisher at Autobahn is a big user of that program and gets those students while they're still in school, and so when they're ready to look, go in the job market, he has first crack at them, so.
Great. Alderman Fleming?
You have a couple of questions of things that are actually in the budget, not on that document. So can you explain two things to me? So there is, we went from last year having no budget for termination payouts, to this year having $100,000 for termination payouts. And then also, the service agreements and contracts has not quite doubled, but has gone up significantly. So can you explain those two for me?
Sure. So we typically in the past have not budgeted for termination payouts, because the, usually you see the savings from the position being held vacant while it's being recruited for to offset the termination payouts. Of course, last year, we had a number of layoffs, 25-ish, I can't remember exactly. We thought it prudent to budget for those terminating payouts because there was such a large number. Similar thing will happen this year with the same number. If all the layouts as proposed, or layoffs, excuse me, go forward, I think we're looking at maybe $250,000 in payouts. So we have budgeted for that accordingly. But typically, in the past, we haven't, based on the opening of the position for the time of recruitment.
Okay. And then the service agreements and contracts?
Can you let me know what?
Yeah, so last year, it looks like we budgeted 265, and we're at about 230, the time this document was printed, and then we're looking at $400,000 for this year.
What business unit?
Oh, sorry, it's in administrative services. I don't know, aside from that, I can give you the item number, but I don't know if that helps you. You can look at it.
I think you might be referring to facilities management?
Are you on a particular page?
I'm on page 79.
I'm pretty sure it's facilities management, that's the only line item in administrative services that would have that high of a service agreements and contracts line item. As we talked about earlier, you know, 46 buildings is what currently facilities maintains with the budget that they have. This year, they moved some money around in between the line items. I know that there's some line items that weren't captured in that, and so they've been putting those service agreements and contracts in other line items. Basically, it's all the elevator maintenance contracts, all the cleaning contracts, all the mat service, everything that goes into, you know, maintaining the 46 buildings. I think it was just a movement of funds from one line item to another, not changing the whole bottom line. But those service agreements and contracts are currently being accounted for in other line items, and it's making it clear that that's where the money's being spent. A lot of the building automation systems, the remote monitoring of HVAC systems, all those things, those contracts would be accounted for in that line item.
Thank you.
Alderman Brathwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric, I just have a quick question. I'm looking at the budget, I know we haven't had any discussions, or at least I haven't received any budget memos. Human resources is budgeted to be about a million-dollar unit this year, correct? From the budget?
Human resources.
Human resources, is that what I said?
Resources.
Oh, human resources, pardon me. Approximately, how many staff do we have in that department?
I believe there are 11.
11? Have you ever looked at outsourcing that department?
We've looked at that several times. Last year, we did have one layoff in human resources, brought the total number of human resource assistants down to five. We also have a safety specialist, that position was new four or five years ago, has accounted for tremendous savings in workers' compensation. We have a couple of staff members in there funded out of risk management and insurance. Those are people who handle the insurance for the employees, and also the staff person who is exclusively devoted to workers' compensation claims.
Sure.
But yes, we looked at outsourcing payroll operations. We have what proposed for next year would be 1.5 staff people in that area. It's, you know, our payroll is extremely complicated with the number of unions that we have and the different rules that is associated with each one of those unions. So that was not found to be cost-effective. So we've certainly evaluated it, but haven't found the savings there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
This can be done by email. Could you give me a list of the 46 buildings we own?
Sure, I'll send you that in an email to the full council. Those include park buildings, shelters, bathrooms, you name it. It's a big list, though.
Great. All right, seeing no more lights, let's move on to community development.
And I'll ask Director Leonard to come up to the podium there as well. And, you know, Director Leonard, I think I'm just going to let you take it.
Thank you, City Manager Rockwitz. Good evening, Johanna Leonard, Community Development Director. Reduce planning service agreements and consulting services. These are actually two line items, one is $25,000 and one is $40,000. That is, those are line items that we haven't spent in recent years. They've often been to match a grant opportunity with the RTA for planning activities. We just haven't used it recently, so I'm proposing to eliminate that. Then we have the addition of two staff members. One is to essentially restore the customer service representative, which we eliminated in last year's budget. Currently, at the building permit desk, we have one customer service representative. We have one seasonal person who's helped through the busy season of the summer, but we have found that it really is critical to have two people there, because when one person can't be there or is helping a customer, a line grows, and that's a critical touch point with our department. The second position is the Planner 1 position, which is in our Planning and Zoning Office, and would, this would be another intake level person who would help with reviewing building permit plans for zoning compliance, basic zoning operations, outreach to individuals who call and have basic zoning questions. That would, again, free up the staff, other staff, to assist with more complex zoning and planning activities. Then we have a cost for reorganizing the Planning and Zoning Division, proposing to separate the zoning, currently we have one position that handles the management of the division and the zoning administrator activities. We would be separating that and promoting one current staff member to the zoning administrator title and keeping the manager to focus on planning activities, which we've heard over the past year are critical activities that we need to do more of. And finally, downtown Evanston reduction, the city manager mentioned our very successful closure of the Washington National Tiff. As a result, downtown Evanston does not need as much funding directly from the city to support their operations. And the elimination of the storefront modernization program. When I first got here in 2010, this was a very important program, because we were coming out of a recession. It was very critical for businesses that were particularly opening in Evanston to get that storefront modernization, to improve their front door and really signal that the lights were on and Evanston was open for business. We've seen a little bit of a decline in that program, and frankly, it's kind of done its job, and we can better use those dollars elsewhere.
Great. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Johanna, the customer service representative, have you gone to the idea of making appointments? I mean, would that be?
We are, we do appointments.
You do appointments?
So this is for somebody, if you're coming in and you have a small, and you're just dropping off your application for building permits, 75% of our permits are done over the counter, which means you come in and you get the permit. So that's the person who's handling that. So right now, it's one person full-time with a part-time person coming. So you wouldn't necessarily make an appointment like, I'm going to drop off my fence permit at 2:00, like that. We do that if there's a more complex case, certainly. We don't, we don't just, people don't just drop in, but for the other smaller things, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to make an appointment.
And there's no one else that could step in if there's a line, too?
We do. Gary Gertis, our building manager, steps in, so, and that's the way we handle it. We've had other staff, planning and zoning staff have seen a line on their way down the hall and have pitched in. We do have a planning and zoning staff member there to answer planning and zoning-related questions. But they're not, they're not necessarily there to help cure the line of length.
Okay. And for the Planner 1 position, well, let me just ask one more question. I thought we had, I thought Scott was our zoning administrator.
He is our zoning administrator, but he's also the division manager, the manager of the staff in that group. So if you recall, we, about five or six years ago, the zoning administrator and the division manager were separate positions. So we merged those in a previous budget when those, when we weren't seeing as high-volume and challenging cases. So this would be separating the two again.
Okay. We had been going outside for building review, I think?
We still are. So SafeBuild is...
And where's that in the budget?
Well, that's not an additional expense, it's part of our existing budget, it's there.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I guess I'd share some other concern, or I assume concern, about the full-time customer service rep. I mean, not that I want the line out the door, but I guess that maybe if we could think through this year a little more creative with our budget deficit of how staff can fill in there, or maybe, I don't know, if we can do more things online, if I'm coming in for a, you know, a permit that I can email in or scan in or something. Just, again, as we're thinking through trying to get through a lengthy budget year, I would like to maybe look at a part-time staff or how we can better utilize some of the other staff. And then my other question, so the $65,000 that's a reduction, just so I'm clear, you're not phasing out those two things, because the total is $85,000 in the budget, so you're just reducing them by 65? So you will use 10 for consulting and 10 for planning service? So if I look in the budget, consulting is $75,000, and service agreements are 10, if I'm lining this up right.
Sorry.
You can come back to me, it's on page 87, but anyway, so that's a total there. And then can you explain to me, please, what falls under the Economic Development Partnership?
So that's been the, a portion of the downtown Evanston. So that's been the, a portion of the Downtown Evanston funding. It has also been our participation in the North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau.
All right, so I'm happy to not participate in that. I think I voted no last time. And then my last question for you is, can you explain the community-sponsored organizations? Looks like there used to be connections for the homeless in 2017, and now it's just community-sponsored organizations.
I believe that is still a connections-for-the-homeless grant. It just has stayed as its own line item.
And what do we give the money for?
I believe that's for our TBR program, but I can get that answer for you.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Johanna. I don't see any more lights for discussion here. All right, let's move on to Health and Human Services. Now, this is an area where we have, as a council, had a lot of conversation, and I know, City Manager, after the last conversation, you were going to go back and run some more numbers. Why don't you start off this?
Yes, and Director Thomas Smith is not with us this evening. She's out of town. We, you know, we have looked at this. I think the council has talked about this. I think we settled at the discussion of the last meeting that in order to be an Illinois Health Department, that the Communical Disease Surveillance Specialist was a required position. So we are going to, when I come back to you next week with a revised budget, I will recommend that that position be retained. We've, I think, talked about the Public Health Educator and the Assistant Director positions. It is my feeling that those positions could be combined into one position if they are not both to be eliminated. I think the issue of an Assistant Director, we talked a little bit about. You've just heard from the Community Development Director, the Business Services Director, neither of those departments have an Assistant Director, and so their division managers, you know, are working division managers as they are in the Health Department. But I think that if the council would like to see some continuation of the Public Health Educator work and some flexibility for the Department Director to be more of a thought leader, that's not something that most of our department heads have as part of their responsibilities, but that is something that Director Thomas Smith has been able to do. So if that's the desire to have other staff do the functional work on a regular basis, then perhaps combining those two positions into one. The Mental Health Board funding, again, we've not really talked about this, proposing a one-third reduction. While these services are extraordinarily important, this is a lot of general fund money to provide to private organizations, and so while it was highly ranked in the priority-based budgeting, I think the reduction being as small as it was is a reflection of that, that in difficult budget times, we are taking tax dollars and providing those tax dollars to private nonprofits. I think this is totally a community standards decision for the City Council. The Victims Advocates, what would have been renamed the Human Services Advocates, we're proposing the elimination of those three FTEs. One is currently vacant and shifting toward a contract model. If you recall the discussions we had last year when these positions were shifted from the Police Department to the Health Department, we have worked, Director Thomas Smith and Assistant City Manager Storley especially, both of them have worked diligently to make that transition be a good one. It has, it really has not been the best, the best fit, and I think that as we've looked more closely at contracting opportunities, that these positions being outside the city and being contracted for by a third-party social service provider perhaps is a better fit for service delivery. So while we're, you see a $258,000 decrease there, there would be a $150,000 increase for a contract. We have had initial discussions with the YWCA, who is prepared to take this work on. And so with the council's concurrence, we would formalize those discussions, finalize those discussions, rather, and have a contract before you, before the end of the year. And then the vital records, we've also talked about. And I think really, this is, this is a policy consideration for the City Council. I think there's a balance between, you know, how the service is provided. The services is provided on the birth certificate side. Lots of parents come to us looking for the birth certificate. That birth certificate can be found in other places, and I think it's really a policy decision for the City Council to decide how important that convenience is. On the death certificate side, there is a service that we do provide, the funeral homes here in Evanston, that if we were not to provide it, they would have to look elsewhere to receive in addition to individuals looking for records of death certificates. So really, this one is a policy decision for the council, and I think otherwise, we have covered all the other issues in Health and Human Services.
Thank you. We've got a few lights on here. We'll start with Alderman, let's start with Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fisk.
Well, I'm wondering what services will the Y not provide if we contract with them to assume the victim advocate's job?
Again, Alderman Rainey, my understanding is that they would, they would be able to provide the services that are currently provided. Ms. Storley, I know you and Director Thomas Smith have talked further about this. Do you have more information to share? Otherwise, we may need to let this discussion be held in advance until Director Thomas Smith's back next week.
And also, if you can say, where are they going to provide it? From what location?
Sure. So my discussions with Director Thomas Smith, she's advised that some of the functions of the former victim advocates, now human service advocates, have already been distributed to Northwest Casa. They're performing all the sexual assault responses at various hospitals and call-in line. Death notifications are being handled by the existing department staff, including the director herself, and then the rest of the members of the human service staff have been trained on that. So the other people in the staff are providing that, those currently. The YW would fill the gap for the domestic violence response. That would be provided by the employees at the facility on ridge, and that would be a 24/7 response. And then, I think I'm missing...
The victims of other violent crime, non-domestic violence.
Right. I don't remember.
And I think that would also be provided, by the way. I think one of the, one of the issues that's come up over the last year is the importance of having staff at the Police Department, having records, access at the Police Department. And I think, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on this point, perhaps we could come back to you next week. Again, Director Thomas Smith booked time off this week, not thinking there was a council meeting, and so she will be back next week.
And there is also a budget memo that details most of what I just said.
But I don't think the memo refers to the services provided by the domestic, by the group that is going to be contracted out to. Can't, tell me their name again?
The domestic violence?
Not the Y.
It's the YW?
No, the other one. There's another...
Northwest Casa.
Northwest Casa.
Yeah. I'd like to know, I'd like a memo detailing their method of handling cases.
Okay, we'll get that to you.
I heard about, okay, I really would like to see that.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
Erica, can you tell me if there is any relation between the police chaplains and victim services? Has there been in the past, and is there now?
It is my understanding, yes, that there is a relationship there, and they provide services when they are available to the capacity that they are capable.
Okay, is that going to continue or not?
That is my understanding.
That it will continue?
Correct.
Oh, here comes Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The relationship between the police chaplains and victim services is complex and evolving. One of the things that I asked the chaplains to do last year when we were in this transition period was to help us with the death notifications. At the time, we had six chaplains, and they felt that they would be capable of helping us with that. In the interim, several of our chaplains have taken very ill with difficult personal medical situations that I'm uncomfortable discussing in public at this time, but their ability to handle that has been degraded. Further, my hope in using the chaplains was a bridge to get to the point where we had 24-hour on-call services again. We never made it. And so I want to alert the council that I don't know that the chaplains are going to be able to continue at the level they have been assisting us, and so that, those responsibilities may more frequently fall to the ranking officer on duty to handle those notifications.
And are they trained?
Yes, there is some rudimentary training that we have provided to all staff officers, but once again, it's, those police officers are generalists. This is not in their wheelhouse of skill sets. Growing up in smaller departments, I've had personal experiences doing this. It's extremely difficult to do, but one thing that's critical about doing this is the time in which you deliver the information. You can't wait around till the next morning. That's not going to get it.
Mr. City Manager, I agree that I think we need to talk about this in more depth when the director is back.
Okay, we've got several other lights, and I do recognize, I think, that we're going to really be able to talk more when Vonda Thomas Smith is back. So let's try to get through this quickly, if we can. Clerk Reed, and then Alderman Braithwaite.
I'm just requesting a discussion from the council and potentially a straw vote to consider the vital records move. There is a memo in the packet from the Health Department. Their proposal is offering birth certificates and death certificates three days a week, Wednesday through Friday. Currently, the program brings in $146,000 of revenue with the reduced days that the service would be available, and also with the fact that folks would, if I'm not mistaken, would have to request the birth and death certificates online, and that would, and only be able to pick them up or receive them by mail. I think it, as a service to the residents, it makes a lot of sense to put the service in the clerk's office, where it could be available every day from 8:30 until 5:00, until 7:00 on Mondays. We're open until 7:00 on Mondays, as well as ensuring that we keep the revenue that is generated from the program. If it's moved to the clerk's office, there'd be $100,000 of revenue that'd be going to the general fund, if not more, because of the increased accessibility, as well as the ability to provide free birth certificates to students in need who are participating in the Mayor's Summer Youth Program, as well as folks who are survivors of domestic violence and folks who are homeless and living in Evanston or working with one of our local social service agencies.
Great. So thank you, Clerk Reed, for that proposal. I have asked the city manager to, you know, consider that proposal along with the proposal from the Health Department in the context of the overall larger budget that we have here, so we're not going to take any straw votes tonight. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'll be brief. I made my comments last week, and I agree. We probably need the director here to answer some additional questions. I just, out of respect for some of the residents who've brought this to my attention, I just, a couple of quick comments. The $250,000 reduction of mental health funds, I think it was several years ago, we had significant data around the number of calls to the Police and Fire Department as a result of residents and their mental health issues. I think that was part of the justification for the partnership with Presence, so I don't know if it's in our budget memo, but I would like to dust off that data just to understand the reason why we partnered with Presence, so if that's out there. I had a very interesting conversation with the director of the YWCA as it relates to taking on the services that we're looking to eliminate. So along with Director Thomas, rather having a memo, maybe we invite the Executive Director, City Manager Karen Singer here to respond to direct questions. The mayor already discussed vital records, so that's all my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Rue Simmons, and Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. I had my light on much earlier, just to ask that we hold the discussion until we could have a complete one with the director here. Seems like we're pretty much into it now, but also, great idea to have Karen here as well from the YW when we do that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
My question was for whoever's, are we doing a budget memo or no memo? We're just having a conversation. I have a question I'd like answered. I don't know if I should ask it now for a memo, or if I should just ask it next week when we're all here.
Let's ask it next week.
Okay.
All right, great. Okay. So that was, we'll talk, we'll talk more when the director's here next week on that, and let's move on to the Police Department.
Elimination of Police Commander position. The position's been vacant for a year. With the Hillard Hines report, I feel comfortable that we can make the adjustment combining the Detective and Juvenile Commander positions into one. Also, following up with the Hillard Hines report, we're proposing to add an additional civilian Community Engagement Specialist. Really, that's probably not the best title from them, as was discussed in the Hillard Hines report. You know, issues of data. We do not handle issues of police data, I think, well enough to serve our community. We have one crime analyst, and that really is the extent of the staff that we have there. The PST officers are asked to do a lot, with a lot of information, and I think that this position can be helpful to that. I think, given the discussions the council's having and the report looking for, the Hillard Hines report looking for a larger strategic plan, I would like to come back to you for further discussion on this position after, next week, as we look to balance other decisions the council's made. The Court Liaison position, Chief Eddington is here. I'll ask him to come up. This position has been vacant for several months. I think the department feels comfortable that it can continue to fulfill the role with existing staff. Is that correct, Chief?
Good evening, again, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the dais. There is a cost to this function. Currently, in this fiscal year, we have expended approximately $17,000 in overtime covering what would have been a full-time position, and I think that full-time position salary was north of $100,000 with benefits. So we can do it with a kind of round robin from service desk officers, but it will be a significant degradation in the information that's readily available from the courthouse. I would, we can do it, but there will have to be a service, an adjustment in your service expectations.
Next, the Police Video Record Specialist. If you recall, this was an add to the budget last year. We anticipated a much larger request from the public for video from our police officers. We have been able to handle those requests with existing staff, and so we're proposing that that vacant position be eliminated. Next is the elimination of five police officers. As I believe the council knows, this current-year budget had four police officer positions held vacant for budget reasons. And so Chief Eddington, perhaps you could speak. I think there's been a lot of misinformation about those positions that were not funded in the budget and how those would, they were, that was approved as part of the current-year budget, and if you could speak to how you have deployed with those vacancies throughout the current year.
Yes, sir. The city manager and I have had a series of serious budget discussions going back eighteen months. I realized there was some level of budget consternation coming, and so we put on the brakes and left those positions vacant in consultation between the city manager and myself. And several other budget questions that have been asked already this year are directly related to this. If you look at the cost of a police officer, that first year's a humdinger. We've got basic training, all the equipment, so those per-year officer costs are escalated greatly in that first year. And so to hire people, put them through the process, make the HR specialists do what they need to do, pay for the testing, the polygraph, the psychological, the medical, then to lay them off nine months later makes no sense. And so looking over the rainbow to... And so, looking over the rainbow to deal with this situation, I felt that the best course of action to save dollars in the current year and in future years was to not completely staff up to anticipate these difficult conversations. And so, we have coped with that in many ways. We have dealt with a minimum staffing issue that currently our, our minimum staffing number is 10. And that means two things. One, we will hire back to get to that number. The other side of that equation is officers can take off discretionary time to get down to that number.
And Chief, before you go on, can you explain more precisely what you mean by minimum staffing?
That's frankly our magic number. If the shift is not at 10, or if there's some reason why it's going to go below 10, down to the level of Sergeant, the staff is authorized to get that number back to 10 by the use of overtime.
And, forgive me, this is the Patrol Division. These are the officers that work and respond to 911 calls. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, there are other police officers in addition to that minimum staffing who are detectives, who are working in PST, who are commanders. It's not as if there are only 10 police officers in the whole community, but there are only 10 police officers on a Patrol Division shift that are patrolling the various beats responding to calls for service.
And your description is accurate prior to 11:00 PM. From 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, it's 10.
Okay, with a...
Bosses.
With a boss.
With several, a minimum of two bosses.
Right, thank you. So, with those, so with the budget, we're proposing the elimination of five police officers. Again, I would like the opportunity to reflect on other changes that the council makes. Eliminating five police officers, we've spent a lot of time talking about potentially eliminating firefighters. Eliminating five police officers is a very big deal. If there are other ways to achieve budget savings without those eliminations, either by leaving those positions vacant or some number of those positions vacant moving forward, that perhaps is a better way to address the issue. And so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we continue this evening and look at balancing based on the desires of the council, I would expect to come back to you with some revisions there.
Thank you. City Manager, Alderman Brady and Alderman Braithwaite?
Chief, when you say after 11 o'clock at night, or after 10, I'm not sure which, do you mean on weekends also there are only 10 officers on duty?
Generally speaking, that's correct, Alderman. I mean, once again, the specialized units are detailed to specific tasks. We'll have some detectives that are on duty till midnight, but please understand that the midnight shift is pretty much out there by themselves.
And always are.
Maybe on a, and I know it doesn't matter whether it's good weather, bad weather, when crime is going to happen, it doesn't take that into account, but I do, it does concern me that that's all we have on weekends. Given that number, how many cars would you say were on the street?
At least eight.
Eight, so eight of the 10 officers are driving around?
Well, no ma'am, they're driving around, but some of those cars are two-man cars.
Okay, so how many cars around the street?
Approximately eight patrol cars.
Eight patrol.
Plus their supervisors.
All right. And this is on weekends after 11 o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I didn't understand the staffing number. Is anybody at the station? I mean, could you read that by me one more time?
Sure. The minimum number is 10 police officers. Those 10 police officers will have a minimum of two supervisors assigned to that, they're on duty for that midnight shift. So, we'll deploy those, some beats get two-man cars, Beat 77, 78 get two-man cars. So, you subtract those numbers down, so you're somewhere between eight and seven cars, not counting the supervisors, out and about.
But, to go to the City Manager's questions to you, that means after 11 o'clock at night, that's all the police officers we have on duty in the City of Evanston. There aren't all the others, like juveniles not sitting in their office, you know, detectives aren't sitting in their office generally.
Chief of Police is usually home sleeping, but I understand the concern, but this is not our first rodeo.
No, I know, but it's concerned.
We have assistance from other jurisdictions we would call on in an emergency, but when we speak to these staffing issues in this budget situation, the only thing we got left to talk about is people.
And Chief Eddington, what would be a maximum in your 11 years plus? What was the most you would ever have on the street after 11 o'clock?
Maybe 15.
Okay.
And, and, and once again, this is, and I, this is a very difficult topic that I do every day and sometimes I talk too fast and take shortcuts and it's not perfectly clear. But, we have over time significantly reduced the staffing, the on-street staffing of the Police Department. When I arrived here in 2007, we spent, we had grants from the county that were approximately $40,000 a year and we plowed that money directly into the summer plan for overtime. Those grants are substantially reduced. Last year during these discussions, we eliminated the overtime provision in the summer plan. And so, we have had this steady downgrade in police resources on the street. Now, I'm sensitive to that. I'm very aware of the erosion of our response time. We've added about 30 seconds to emergency calls with that lower level of staffing. That's something that myself and my coworkers at the command level are very focused on. I think, on the other hand, to put this in a context, we're also very focused on what the Part 1 crime rate is. We continue to be successful in addressing that issue. And also, I have to say, over the time I've been here, working with the City Manager, he is keenly aware of stuff happens and we need to, we need to adjust. The most recent adjustment occurred after the September 20th shooting. The need for high-profile patrols in the areas that were most likely areas of retaliatory shooting, we deployed officers and spent the overtime to have them there. And so, we start off with this number 10 and we'll adjust up if we need to, and that's done in consultation with the City Manager. He's rarely surprised about what I'm doing and how I'm going about it. And so, that's been an open communication between myself and the manager to address these events that need to be addressed.
One thing I did want to add is that when we think of five police officers, spaces vacant, it really takes four, maybe five, to fill one police officer shift per shift. So, it's not like we're short five police officers per shift. It would only add really one police officer per shift.
Our relief factor's problem in the area, 1.8 to 2. So, it would be, by the time you spread this out over 365 days and 24 hours, it's 2-ish.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for breaking down, or just providing clarification around the Court Liaison position. So, I, it's interesting to know that through overtime that you can provide some assistance. So, I guess I would love to maybe just get a bullet-pointed explanation, whether it's in a memo between what a full-time position would do versus what the $17,000 of overtime can provide. Because we've discussed this in alternatives to arrest, so I just want to have something in writing to take back to the committee as we continue to discuss this.
I will do that, Alderman, but a quick, a quick response is, with a full-time person, I frequently receive calls from members of the diocese saying, "Chief, I need to know what's happened about this case."
Yes, exactly.
It goes down the chain of command and somebody calls the Court Liaison, he calls back, okay, there's no Court Liaison to call. So, the service desk officers will be cycling the large amount of paperwork that is exchanged between the Police Department and the courts, but that on-scene, hey, tell me what's happened in courtroom 206.
Okay.
Will not exist. And so, I would implore the council, if you have for your ward what is a heater case, you're going to need to tell me or the next guy that you're paying attention to this so we can pre-plan to track the case before the day of the case.
Got it. That's helpful. And then my other, and I don't know, I stepped out for a moment, the Community Engagement Specialist. I know we're waiting for more additional information. I can only speak for the second ward. I know fifth ward, eighth ward, we get a different type of, we have a different type of need from our officers, right?
Yes, sir.
And I think, I can tell you with my second ward PST, I think he does a great job with the engagement. I don't really see a big need for that type of engagement at that cost at this time during the budget, so I just wanted to make that comment. And then the other question that I have, I realize that by not filling the five vacancies, there's a potential savings of, you know, 541,000. Approximately, what's the total overtime? And I'm sure there's a budget memo somewhere for this past year.
There is. In the history of the last six years, we're, the Police Department expensed between 1.3 and 1.6 million dollars in overtime. One of my mentions about I'm covering this full-time position with overtime is I, or the next Chief of Police will be back here explaining why the overtime went up, and it's going to go up just based on how we're covering court. That's unavoidable. That's an overtime cost we didn't incur before.
So, is the natural argument then, by filling these five vacant positions, that will help to reduce that 1.3?
It will have some impact on it, but one of the issues, especially when we begin to delve into how we're spending overtime, and I think the budget analyst for the Police Department, Lou Gerges, has provided you with an extremely detailed report of where that money goes. And so, as you look at where we're spending that money in court time, in other events, I don't know that, you're not going to get a dollar-for-dollar savings. You're going to realize some savings because the issues of making the minimum, it will be less likely that we'll have to hire back because of a sick call if those positions are filled, but you're not going to get a one-for-one dollar savings by the filling of those positions vis-à-vis the overtime budget. Okay, I know you're looking at me like I'm trying to sell you a used car, but take a minute and look at that overtime report, sir. There's a lot of detail in that that I hope will bring some clarity to this.
Okay.
And if not, please call.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Ru Simmons and Alderman Fleming?
Thank you. I want us to be really careful about reductions in our police force as we're looking at possible reductions in mental health and not yet having a presentation on how the youth and young adult changes might be. I understand that there won't be any, but all of the other services and programs and staff that are supporting violence reduction measures, I would hate for us to reduce our force and also reduce resources in violence reduction and then the great work that the police force has done in recent years to be undone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Chief, can you prepare just for this year, if possible, kind of the number of calls you get for that overnight? Because if, our citizens are hearing that we only have 10 police officers, so that doesn't sound like, you know, that's not a lot or doesn't sound like a lot. But maybe if we can just see kind of the number of calls, or even if you just do a percentage of the type of calls, because I imagine, you know, even, some people might think, well, we're going to have an uptake of burglaries because no one's, we know we don't have enough police out. So, if you can just kind of get us some kind of graph that shows the kind of calls. And then my other question had to do with the, I guess for me, this ties, and we talk about the overtime, ties into what the consultant talked about with kind of a need for further analysis as where we have officers placed. And so, you know, she talked about SROs and those kind of things, and I realize they're not working overtime, their overnight shift. But if we get to the point of doing, I would like us to do next year a better staff analysis because maybe there are some officers that, you know, we used to use for X, Y, and Z job, but now we don't really need them there. We can maybe move them around to do some other things so that we, you know, just are being more efficient and where we have officers placed. So, I really, from that report, that was something that stuck out to me in terms of where we have officers and commanders, and I know you guys have a lot of levels.
Alderman, let me do the first question first. That'll be relatively easy. The number of calls on the midnight shift is something that we can prepare in relatively short order. One of the things I would like to mention about that is sometimes the complexity of those calls require significant numbers of people. They just, they do. And I will try to give some breakdown of the complexity of those calls rather than just the number.
Yeah, that would be great. So, people, just so people can understand if 10 is sufficient or not.
Yep. Also, I'd like to comment on the Hillard and Hines report regarding SROs. And once again, I would like to convey to the council that the Hillard and Hines report is a snapshot in time. Nothing that's in that report is incorrect. It just not be, maybe not be accurate today as the day the report was authored. And for instance, they talk about there's no Sergeant in PST, that that's been changed since the report was authored. They talk about we haven't utilized the RMS system in investigations. That's being addressed. And so, as we look at that moving target and interpret things, one of the issues about SROs that they brought up was, they're saying basically can't use the SROs in patrol during the summer months. We have done that in the past. We did not do it this last summer because those officers weren't, did not have body worn cameras yet. The commitment I made to the community and to the council was that serious police interactions would be on body cameras starting February of this year. And so, to put officers out on patrol without body cameras seemed to me to be particularly inestude, especially with the community expectation that serious police interactions would be recorded on body camera. That will be different next summer. The new Chief of Police will have his disposal, the decision to deploy those officers in patrol because they will be camered up by then. And so, as we look at this, there's, this is a constantly changing environment that the Police Command staff needs to react to, to appropriately spend the city revenues to provide that level of police service.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Saffron?
Sure. I guess this is a question for the City Manager. Overnight, we have 10 police officers, 26 firefighters, and how many other, like Public Works employees on duty? Or is it a matter of people being on call for if things break or if there's a problem?
In the winter months, starting, Mr. Stonebeck, what, December 1, we have an overnight crew that works from, what, December to April?
Yes.
And that's how big a crew?
Six.
Six. So, from December to April, we have six Public Works staff members, the firefighters, the police officers. That, I think, is, and the water plant, don't forget about the water plant. So, there's, there's one, two water plant operators there overnight. So, that is the contingent of our evening.
Nine one one.
Oh, and civilians and police and fire. So, the civilian, service desk officers, there's what, one or two overnight?
Two to three.
Two or three service desk officers and then how many 911?
Three.
Three, so that's the civilian side of police.
Like somewhere in the mid-40s in terms of people that are working and civilians overnight?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Seven days a week, 24 hours a day. All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we go back to the list, Chief, don't go away. Animal shelter operating expenses, we have an agreement with the Evanston Animal Shelter Association regarding certain expenses that we pay for. The costs of those have increased over the last couple of years. The department has paid for some of those increases out of other funds. They're asking for their budget to be balanced to reflect the additional costs. This is food, kitty litter, consumables. Chief Eddington, does that sound about right to you?
It does, sir.
I think there's a budget memo, Mr. Lewis Lake in on this as well. Increase in DUI expenses, we have regularly received grants from the state of Illinois around holiday periods for DUI. Again, the crack budget team at the Police Department has discovered that the costs associated with those enforcement... that the costs associated with those enforcement actions exceed sometimes the grant expense. So in order to balance that out, they have asked for additional funding. Miss Lewis-Laken, am I saying that about right, aren't I? Yes, okay. The COLA increase to overtime and payout expenses, again, something that the department has not kept up with. And so they've asked this year to make adjustments to their budget in order to keep up with their overtime and payout expenses, adjusted for cost of living adjustments and contracts. Police dog needs to be retired in 2019, so the cost associated with purchasing another police dog is $15,000. Then we move on to overtime for police during Northwestern University athletic events. I think a previous council meeting, we described the general practice over many years that the city paid for overtime costs for football, for police officers outside of the immediate Ryan Field property. And so along Central Street, both East and West, the approximate cost of that overtime is $12,000 per game or $84,000 for the seven scheduled home football games next calendar year. The city also expends a fair amount of overtime on DILO Day, and we are proposing that the university either reimburse the city for those costs or provide other appropriate law enforcement to maintain, which is in essence a traffic mission at the football games. I don't, the police overtime is a public safety function at DILO Day, not a traffic function largely. So I don't believe the university would have the ability to contract, but they certainly could contract for other law enforcement to do traffic services. So Mayor Hagerty and I have met with officials at Northwestern, specifically with President Shapiro, who has indicated the university's willingness to take on this expense. Next, the increase in the police overtime budget. As the chief has said, a strategy that we have used over time with the reduction of budgeted costs associated with the summer plan, also associated with other reductions in the police budget over the last several years is to use overtime. We need to look and calibrate the overtime budget with actual spending. So for the last couple of years, we have made adjustments in the police department's overtime budget to more accurately reflect the spending there. And so we're proposing a $100,000 increase to do that for the coming year for all the reasons we've discussed. And then finally, the annual body camera contract software and storage. The first year and a half, two years of that contract have been covered by grants from others. We are now on the hook to pay the full amount. And as you recall, as the chief just alluded to, we have increased the camera for all public-facing police officers, so we've had to purchase additional cameras. So that is the cost associated with the annual cost associated with the body camera program, which was, chief, about what, 250,000 when we started. The 311, I think, reflects mostly additional cameras and the maintenance and contractual costs associated with the additional cameras.
And we, this was predicted for the city council on September 25, 2017 memo, when the camera project came online. So this was, this was an anticipated up.
Sir. So, Mr. Mayor, those are the issues with police. As I've indicated, we'll come back and look at the five officers, the community engagement specialist, based on the discussions we've had here. So unless there's any other questions for Chief Eddington, I'll thank him again.
Thank you.
Last time. Congratulations, Rich.
Thank you, Chief.
And we'll move on to the fire department. A lot of discussion regarding the station foreclosure. I'll ask Chief Scott to come up. But let me just make some initial comments. We have a large budget deficit to cover. And to not look at the costs associated with our two largest expenses, police and fire, I believe was not an appropriate exercise. And so I went to both Chief Eddington and Chief Scott and asked them to look at options for me. No chief of police, no fire chief is ever going to want to come before a city council and advocate for less resources. There are many, many reasons, of course, for that, but no chief, no department head, as you've heard from other department heads, are ever going to come and advocate. However, we have a budget deficit we have to address. So I asked Chief Scott to look at the closure of a fire station. We looked at Station 4. We looked at the two stations on Central Street. Ultimately, it was my decision to put forward the recommendation for Station 4. I do not want to endanger the residents of Evanston. I do not want to, you know, not provide excellent fire service, but I think it's important for the council and the community to recognize the costs associated with providing that service. I think it's appropriate to look at options. And certainly, when you're looking at the deployment of fire resources, the closure of a station is not an inappropriate option to look at. So with that, I know that Chief Scott has prepared a very complete budget memo that talks about the impacts. And Miss Lewis-Laken, perhaps we can pull up the chief's budget memo because I think there are maps that show the impact on response time for a closed Fire Station 4. I think the chief was also very thoughtful in putting together other information, including a very good table regarding the costs associated with providing fire service in other communities. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you would like the chief perhaps just to walk through this, given the interest?
I think that, I think that would be good. I mean, we've had a lot of certain people at public comment. I don't think up at this dais, we've had really an in-depth conversation about fire. So I think tonight's the night. Welcome, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Reed, City Manager Bauckowitz, good evening, Fire Chief Brian Scott. I'll be happy to go through what I believe to be the impacts of the closure of Engine 24 and Station 24. As the city manager alluded to in his opening comments, I was directed to cost out several options for your consideration during a very, very difficult budget process. In June, I first came to the APW as a matter for discussion. I think that report was also given to the council as a whole. At that time, I had some options for your consideration, including the elimination of our community engagement programs, which you see did make it to the budget worksheet. I also talked about holding some of our full-time equivalent or position vacancies for 2019 at some savings. And I was also directed to look at ways in reducing overtime, which for our department would mean somehow reducing our minimum staffing model by either one, two, or three individuals. So in addition, in August, the city manager then directed me to look at costing out the closure of Fire Station 4. Fire Station 4 was selected because in his talks with the budget team and facilities, there were some capital improvements that were concerning to him. So that $1.2 million figure is directly related to the elimination of nine positions. Three members of Engine 24 cost three shifts is nine, and that's where you get the $1.2 million. What I provided to you on October 11th was a detailed memo of what I believe to be the impacts of such a closure for the station. I first wanted to kind of give you a brief overview of our current staffing model, and you can see that there up on the screen. Our current model is 26 is our minimum staffing each and every day, 24 hours a day. That is five engine companies, two truck companies, two ambulances, and a shift chief supervisor. They are in place to make sure we have our full manning across all five stations, which are strategically placed throughout the city. Now, we've had this model in place for well over 35 years. I deem it to be highly effective, highly efficient, highly reliable, and highly resilient to the types of emergencies that we have to deal with over 10,000 times a year. You've seen over that period of 35 years, an increase in our call volume of 51%. So our 35-year average is a 2% per year increase in our call volume. So the reason I bring that forward, it's important to realize that the department, since about 1982, '83, has actually lost staffing about 10%. And yet, the call volume continues to increase, and the firefighters are asked to do more and more with the same amount of resources or even less. I also wanted to mention that our call volume within that 10,000, about 45% of those occur concurrently. And that's important to consider when we reduce staffing in any way because sometimes we look at these models with respect, with respect to response, and we assume everybody's in quarters and everybody's available. But in a very busy city like Evanston, many times, that's not the case. In fact, conservatively, 45% of our calls occur at other times at other calls within the city. Now, how do we determine what good staffing and what good response time is? For many years, this was left up to conjecture and opinion by fire chiefs. And so approximately 10 years ago, the NFPA, in collaboration with NIST, did some very empirical-based research, and they came up with standard 1710. And so in the memo, I've kind of tried to lay out in broad strokes what the staffing is that's appropriate by NFPA 1710. And you'll see on page two of the memo, if you could move a little bit forward, Kate. You'll see here with 1710, that basically, they try to break down hazard types into low, medium, and high. A low hazard type would be a single-family home less than 2,000 square feet. You can see with that particular type of hazard, we do well. We can handle that incident quite easily. Once we get into the medium hazard type, which is, for example, an apartment building, a commercial structure, or a very large, single-family home, you can see that we're already currently operating at a deficit of two. And that's why with those types of fires, you'll see us routinely calling for mutual aid from our neighboring communities. In fact, any significant structure fire in the city, we're calling for additional resources because every resource within the city is being used immediately and being put to work. High hazards are going to be target hazards, high rises, and you can see we operate at a significant deficit in those types of buildings at negative 17. Now, in the chart I provided towards the end of the memo, I'm not sure if we can go there briefly, I also wanted to mention, as we compare to other comparable communities with staffing, that we are right in line. It's all the way to the end there. Thank you. It's one of the attachments, but that's okay. We can continue on. But I just wanted to point out that our staffing relative to other comparable communities is right in line. And that was the importance of, oh, there we go. So daily staffing for comparable communities is an average of 33. You can see Evanston is below that at 26 each and every day. Now, the closure of Station 4, to me, has two main impacts. It's going to have an increase in overall response times for the community, but in particular, it would be an increase in response times for the affected district of Engine 24, which from the data I provided to you and the response time maps, would be a minimum of 50% increase. So it would be one-to-two-minute increase in response times to that affected area. But because of something I'm calling the cascade effect, you would see an increase in response times throughout the city. Why? It's because, again, because we're so busy, you'll see resources need to be pulled from further and further and further away, which results in response time increases in other areas of the city, not just Engine 24's district. I provided a response time evaluation for all the districts upon your request. I also mentioned that the response time standard for NFPA 1710 is four minutes, and our average time is three minutes and 15 seconds. Now, when you increase response times, I tried to frame this very, very clearly, that on page three, it focuses on two main impacts. One, you're going to see an increase for property and life loss because of the fact that structure fires are going to be more likely to expand beyond the room of origin. And I provided two important statistics on that. It's going to be on page three, Kate. Or, excuse me. There you go. Thank you. According to the NFPA, civilian fire deaths increase by 90% and property damage by 80% when fire extends beyond that room of origin. And so the critical fire behavior factor here is something we call flashover. That occurs within about eight minutes of a fire occurring in a room. And so it's critical that firefighters get there before that eight-minute mark. And so when you walk that back between our reflex time, us getting out and then getting to the scene and setting up and operating our hose lines, it's imperative that we get there. And the response time component of four minutes, and that's where that four-minute number comes from. That's where they base that research. I also wanted to mention, too, that in 2017, we held 51% of our structure fires to the room of origin. Also, when you have fires that extend beyond the room of origin, there's also increased risk, not only to civilians, but it places firefighters increased risk as well. On the EMS side, this is also critically important. So as I mentioned in some previous meetings, if, for example, one of us was to go down a cardiac arrest and we didn't have the benefit of emergency medical services, our chance of survival would be only about 3% or 4%. But if I can get EMS to you with quality training, with paramedics, with the right equipment and medications and defibrillation, I can increase that up to 44%. That's quite significant. That survivability decreases by 10% for every additional minute that there's a delay. With pride, I can tell you, because of our great response times, our great training and equipment, our save rate is over 47%. So that's an important factor to police consider. Also, when we talk about the evaluation, I mentioned just the staffing in general and the importance of having the right amount of people for each major incident in the city. And I really can't predict when those are going to be. So for example, why do we have 26 people at 2:00 in the morning? That's because we can never predict when that fire is going to occur. In fact, our most significant life hazards are those that are at 2:00 in the morning. So it's important to consider. I also tried to put in some unit hour utilization numbers near the end, if you could kind of scroll through, Kate. Oh, thank you. So UHU, our unit hour utilization, is a great workload indicator. It kind of gives some empirical backing to just how busy we are. So if someone tells you, yeah, we're a real busy fire department, how do you quantify that? And UHU is an industry standard that helps us kind of understand that. And you can see, and I've kind of highlighted in red, we have five companies that are already exceeded the UHU standard of .20, which means that they're unavailable at least 20% of their time over a course of a year. And my point in bringing this forward is that interdependence we have at all the fire stations working together to be, again, a reliable, efficient, and resilient system that can handle all hazards. If we close Engine 24 or another company, you will see those UH numbers increase. And again, it would reduce our ability to handle major emergencies. Lastly, I put in a little piece that, again, it's going to be hard to get the financial breakdown, but I'm certainly willing to look into it for you. But we just were recently awarded our ISO Class 1 rating, which places us in the top .00% of all fire departments in the United States. That's quite an achievement. And part of that achievement is directly related to the kind of response model we're able to bring to the city of Evanston. The closure of Engine 24 would very likely place that ISO rating in jeopardy, and we would most likely see a D grade of our rating to a two or a three. And we'd have to look into the impact it would have on residences and businesses with respect to our insurance ratings. So hopefully, the memo made sense. I know I had to tack a lot of information into the short amount of space, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the impact or effect.
Just a couple statistical questions. So we're getting over 10,000 calls. The number of calls have doubled in 10 years? How many years is it?
Over a 35-year period.
Over 35 years, it's doubled. How many of the 10,000-plus calls are fires? How many are major fires if you differentiate? What is driving that significant increase in calls? Are other communities seeing such an increase? What actions are we taking, if there are any, we can take to actually reduce the number of calls?
So let me answer that last piece first in terms of other communities are also seeing some of the same increases that we are seeing. It's very difficult to kind of pinpoint exactly what those causes are. Anecdotally, I can probably tell you that it's going to be tied to increases in terms of the aging population of any community, the fact that we have a lot of people that use EMS for primary care in terms of their health insurance, and a number of different factors, which also I must mention is the fact that firefighters are expected to do more and more. So a generation ago, a fire department pretty much just handled fires. Now, in today's fire service, we're an all-hazards department that answers a myriad of different calls for every type of rescue. For example, October 9, we had one iron worker killed and one severely trapped because of falling iron in a construction site, who was called, the Evanston Fire Department. And basically, the full deployment of our folks on duty were there to rescue the one iron worker. Fortunately, we couldn't save the other one. So that would be one piece. It's important to remember, you are correct, that less than 1% of that 10,000 calls are major structure fires. We handle about 90 fires in a given year, Mr. Mayor. But I would always caution the council in looking at a fire department as a production-type model. What we need to kind of look at it as, it's, again, it's resiliency. Very much like the human body, where if I was to say to someone on the council, you know, you really haven't been sick much in the last year. Let's cut the number of white blood cells you have, right? When you need the white blood cells, they have to be there. They have to be there with the adequate levels. And the fire department is no different. That's certainly the number of fires we go to isn't a lot compared to the overall calls we respond. we respond to, but when those fires occur, we need the requisite amount of people, and that's where that NFPA seventeen standard is so important, because it kind of gives you the empirical basis for what that number should be, just beyond me telling you what I think it should be. What we're doing to help reduce the call volume, as I mentioned before, and I think my June presentation, one thing we're really looking at is mobile integrated healthcare. So we're developing a partnership right now with President St. Francis, where we're going to have a more patient-centered approach to EMS, where we'll have our off-duty firefighters look at some of those folks in the community that have an over-reliance on EMS, that tax our resources with EMS, and see if we can get them better care in a more patient-centered way that hopefully, they'll win, will get better outcomes, cost savings for the hospital, as well as cost savings for the city of Evanston.
I appreciate that. I mean, if there are high-volume, you know, callers repeatedly, if we can reduce that, that's helpful. Okay, I've got a whole bunch of lights, and I didn't see all the order, so we're going to go, thank you, City Clerk Alderman Fisk, then Braithwaite, then Winn.
Thank you, Chief. You're an eloquent spokesman for the fire department, and I really appreciate that. So when I think about priority-based budgeting, I think, you know, what are the city's needs? And you start at the top and you go down, and the top, to me, are police and fire. In my ward, there's a high percentage of elderly, there are bigger and bigger buildings being built, there are a number of things that are on your charts as we're going to require a different level of service, and we see that in the data that you've provided. I just can't, I can't support the cuts to the fire department. I can't support the cuts to the police department either. I mean, because to me, the community safety, part of that is what we are here to provide to our residents, it's what they rely on, and their safety is so important. It's really helpful for me to hear what you have to say in terms of, for example, the outreach in your, to presence, not using our firefighters as basically their first healthcare choice, but to really get them the help that they need. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of, we just have to find a way to deal with the budget, but it shouldn't be on the backs of police and fire. I just, I just don't see it makes any sense. Maybe someone else can explain it to me, but as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't.
What percentage of the general fund budget is fire and police?
Twenty-two percent.
Of, fire is twenty-two percent?
Is that correct?
And then, police add on, it's fifty-five percent, is that correct, of the total general fund, public safety?
Other thirty, yeah. So about fifty-five for the two.
About fifty-five percent of the general fund budget is public safety? Okay.
Police and fire.
Police and fire, okay. And what percentage of that is labor?
The Lion Chair.
Seventy-five percent of that is labor, okay. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, where in the budget memo, and I've been trying to figure out, how did either you or our team of analysts come up with that one-point-two million dollars in savings? Where's that coming from?
That is from my management analysts, who figured out, I believe, it was a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars between salary, benefits, pension, all that combined, and times that number by nine.
So, is the understanding, if the station closes, just giving our numbers, that we would lose nine?
That's correct.
So that's where they're calculating the one-point?
Yes, sir.
Two. And just given all the information that you just shared, the fact that every year we increase in our numbers of calls, this year, we're looking to add four large developments, two of which are senior buildings, that we would still decrease our fire by nine. So is that a decrease, or just not fill the vacancies? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand the math.
There did be a loss of full-time equivalent positions. Now, fortunately, I shouldn't say fortunately, but currently, we have eight vacancies, so it's going to result in the elimination of eight vacancies with the layoff of one current-staffed FTE. But I think the best way to look at it as is, with the closure of Station Twenty-Four, Engine Twenty-Four, which is staffed by three firefighters and paramedics each day, would go away, and that's where that number nine comes from, three firefighters per day across three shifts. Because we work twenty-four-hour shifts.
Okay, so it's only technically three, although it's, say that again, I just want to be clear.
No, no problem. So we have three firefighters working per shift, which is a twenty-four-hour period.
Okay.
The elimination of Engine Twenty-Four would mean the reduction of nine positions in the fire department.
Okay.
Eight of which are currently vacant at the moment, and one is filled.
I thought it was coming from the notion of selling the property.
No, that number, that you'd have to talk with facilities, I think, on that, I don't have that information.
Okay, so it's just a statement. So, I'm still, I guess, I'm going to share, and Alderman Fisk, and I've heard from all of my residents, there's no one that's supporting. I would also include residents from the southeast corner of town, so I'm assuming that's the Ninth Ward and the Eighth Ward. I've also heard from the school district, so I realize the constraints of the budget, but I just want to be clear in voicing my concerns that none of the residents support it, and, to be honest, based on our budget meeting, there were some residents that, and I continue to get emails, are even willing to look at some form of tax increase as long as they understand that those dollars are going directly to our fire and police.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Winn?
Yes, thank you, Chief. I really appreciate all of this data that you gave us. This has been really helpful. I've gone over it a number of times, looking at it. It's really given me a different view of the fire department and the operations and the staffing, and I think, like everyone else in Evanston, we really appreciate what superb fire service we have. And like everyone else up here, I don't want to make any cuts at all to anything. And so, I have, you know, I've had a couple of the firefighters come to my office hours last week, and I talked with them about some of the issues that, you know, I've been pondering, I've talked with you a little bit about this, too. So we have this, and I'm trying to figure out, what's a solution to this? So, we have a model that was established thirty-five years ago, and that was before, I imagine, there were only a handful of firefighters that were paramedics back then, if that?
Certainly less.
Certainly less.
Certainly less, but...
But now, we must be hundred percent?
Almost, about ninety-nine percent.
Yeah. And so, you know, I look back thirty-five years ago, probably, most people had some kind of healthcare of some sort. They had some, and nowadays, we know, a lot of people don't. And so, we have forty-five percent of our calls are EMS calls of some sort.
Sixty, sixty-four percent, sixty-five percent are EMS?
Oh, then I flipped the numbers.
The forty-five percent number I was referring to is the fact that, conservatively, we have about forty-five percent of our calls occurring simultaneously with other calls in the city at the same time.
That's right, you did say that, okay. So, I support this, looking at, you know, how do we stop someone from needing a fire, you know, an ambulance unless it's what, or a fire, the firefighters, unless it's actually really what firefighters and our EMS staff are for? So as, we've all heard, occasionally, people use, well, more often than not, they call you when, because they don't have regular medical care. And so you all are, and you and I have talked about this, drilling down into your numbers to see who are the one, who are people who are using the service over and over again, and how would we better provide them with service so they, they don't have to call you when the blood pressure gets out of control, or diabetic issues, or the, all of the variety of issues that, that you're getting these frequent calls for? So, I think in the, you know, if not now, but over the next year, I think it would be really interesting for the fire department somehow to drill down into your calls, if you already haven't, to see, you know, what, what are, you know, what, who's calling and for what, and, and how frequently? And, and then what do you do to try, what are some things that you, we could do to prevent, to stop the call from the first place? And, so I, you know, I, that's something I would like to see coming up in the future for next year. But I, one of the questions I did have was that, just like our police department has different deployment numbers for different times of day, when, you know, we have this chart that shows the hour, average hourly call volume, and it definitely drops at night. So from like, after eight PM to about seven-thirty or so in the morning, it's at a much lower level than it is the rest of the day. And I know we were saying that you have the same level of staffing for twenty-four hours a day, and so one of the questions I would have is, is it possible to still provide the fast-response times for the vast majority of time, but just as we have, the police department provide, has more staffing at different shifts of the day, just like an emergency room has different staffing because they know when their peak times are? If we know that overnight, we don't get as many calls, and I know you said that sometimes the most dangerous things happen, but that's true, you know, for, you know, we can pick out anything. Is it possible for us to not close Station Four, but change our deployment numbers? And you don't have to answer that question right now, but that's something I'd like to know a little bit more about, so that we don't close Station Four, but we change the deployment model that we have, so that we actually are deploying our resources as best we can when they are needed. So we tailor the types of deployment we have for the need that we have. So, and then, another issue, and this is much more long-term, and I talked to the firefighters who came to my offices about this, is if you were redrawing the map of Evanston, and this is something very long-term, if you were redrawing and you were deciding, okay, where are the optimal places to put fire stations? Sometime in the next year, I'd like to see what that is, because I know we have fire stations, and they, you know, they're there for historic reasons, because of different population centers and various other needs, probably that there was land available, you know? And it would be, I think, looking ahead, is that, maybe not, not even two or three years, but further down the line, you know, we have to look ahead to figure out what are the needs going to be. We have an aging population, we have taller buildings, are our fire stations in the right place? No, so that's not a this year, but that's because of all of your data, that's something that, that I look at. And then, you know, looking at the staffing and budget comparison, which I think is really interesting, between these other communities, you know, I look at like Arlington Heights, I don't know what Oak Park is doing, and Skokie, and so in terms of call volume, you're right, all of these communities have, have a higher call volume. I mean, it's, you know, we're not alone in ten thousand, ten thousand calls a year. But when I look at like Skokie, it looks like they have more firefighters, but they are spending at least two million dollars less than we are a year. And then, when I look at Arlington Heights, and they have twenty-five daily staffing, and they're spending four-and-a-half million dollars less than we are. So, is there, could you, not tonight, but I'd like you to give, give us more information about how, how those numbers break down? Because Arlington Heights has a call volume of six, seven calls more, seven calls less than we do, and population almost the same, twenty-five daily firefighters, and they spend nineteen million dollars a year on their firefighters, and we spend twenty-four-point-two. So, that, I'd just like to understand how the, you know, looking at these other communities, how it all works. So, I really appreciate all of the information that you provided, I appreciate all of the service that you all provide, and I think we need to rethink this model, because the way people are using the fire department is different than it was thirty-five years ago. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Winn. Alderman Fleming, and then Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I have a couple questions. So, the integrated care model, you mentioned those are going to be off-duty firefighters, is that correct, is that what you said?
Correct.
So, who pays for them, or how are you, does, is Presence paying for them? Are we sharing the costs?
Presence, Presence St. Francis Foundation is funding the entire program.
Okay, great. And then, the, I've had some questions about the rating and how it will impact insurance, and I've talked to a couple agents and gotten some non-committal answers. So if you find that out, can you please share that in terms of how it might impact homeowners' insurance and such? I've been told that people's homeowners' insurance will go up if we, if our rating goes down, but I can't quite get an answer for that.
I'm having difficulty, too, and I've tried as well, and I've even spoken with ISO directly. I think ISO's response is going to be, is it really depends on the individual homeowner on the, on the residential side, but on the commercial side, it's where you'll have the biggest impact with respect to any ISO downgrade.
Okay, and then I know that there's a conversation about purchasing a new fire truck.
Okay.
And so can you tell me what kind of the estimated cost is there? And then also, I guess my question is, do we need to, maybe instead of getting a new fire truck, think about getting a new ambulance, being that we have, you know, sixty-five percent of our calls are EMS calls, and we only have two ambulances, is that correct?
We have two frontline ambulances with a third that's part of a jump, a jump relationship with Engine Twenty-Three. So what I mean by a jump or jump company is that, when that third ambulance is called into service, I have to place Engine Twenty-Three out of service, which reduces the fire suppression capability to the northeast side of Evanston. We are getting delivery of a new ambulance in the next few weeks, so we'll be replacing one of our older ambulances with this newer model.
So we would still just have two, and then the jump ambulance? That would not put us at three?
Correct, and then with your question regarding the cost of the fire engine, cost is six-hundred-thousand dollars on average for a new fire pumper Class A.
And what's the cost about for an ambulance?
Approximately two-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, and the vast majority of what I was going to talk about's already been covered. First of all, I'll mention, I appreciate you diplomatically pointing out why some of the ideas I had were not good ideas, so you were kind in that. But basically, just at the moment, you're making do with the eight vacancies, right? It's not an ideal situation, but that's kind of where you're at, as far as the department.
I would say that, yeah, it's, eight vacancies is a lot to keep open.
Right.
We've been working over the last couple fiscal years with four vacancies, and we've been able to adequately maintain service to the community and appreciate some real savings by that model. Our overtime does increase, but even when you account for the overtime, savings is over three-hundred-thousand dollars a year by holding those vacancies.
Okay.
The number of, if you hold four vacancies, and we are to even account for the overtime, that number is three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars in savings.
Okay.
And I think there's a budget memo in there, so, on that particular item.
And keeping the eight is roughly double that.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. None of us want to close a fire station, you know, that's just, you know, obviously, nobody wants that to happen. But at the same time, and I think Alderman Winn was alluding to it with some of the numbers for other communities, we're just, we're struggling with finding a way to find some long-term relief on the budget, and, and not just like, you know, for this year, because it's that, you know, shifting percentage of the budget, et cetera. So, and I've committed to firefighters I've spoken to, it's important to me to make sure that we, and really ensure that we can meet our pension obligations as well.
Sure.
So I don't, I don't want to ever put ourselves in a situation where, you know, twenty-six years down the road, when maybe I'm not a council member, please God, don't let me be a council member in twenty-six years, but the, I want that to happen, I want, I want the obligations to be met, so that's important. So, I think there's probably just a general inclination to do what we can to keep the station, you know, open, but I think my inclination is also to try to, you know, keep these vacancies... But I think my inclination is also to try to, you know, keep these vacancies open, but also to look for these other types of solutions, whether there are possible, you know, labor cost savings, whatever that might look like, or if there are ways to bring the call volumes down. I realize that's outside of what you're doing, but I don't know if there are other ways that would, that collectively we can pursue policies that will take some of it off the plate. Alderman-Fleming and I had had conversations before about that whole additional ambulance, it's EMS calls. So, yeah, I don't know if the one you're replacing is any good. I don't know. Maybe I keep it in the garage or something, but, but, but I am looking at that possibly for the long term, because ambulances, the crew is two, Engine's three, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I would caution the council, and in considering that particular change to our response model, that what you lose out is that suppression capability. One of the neat things about our, our model, which makes it so, again, efficient and resilient, is the fact that not only do we have dual-trained firefighters and paramedics, but our equipment is dual-capable.
Right.
So Engine 24, in effect, is an ALS-equipped vehicle that provides EMS while at the same time having that suppression ability as well.
Right. And, but again, long-term, not to make those kinds of changes now, and particularly not under budget stress. So I think this requires, you know, a carefully thought-through consideration. So maybe if there was the ambulance vehicle available at another station, 24 responds, they need the ambulance to transport, it can come, but the life-saving team is there in shorter order than otherwise would be available, so.
Sure.
Looking at some of those things for a long-term basis.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman-Wilson. Alderman-Reiny, then Alderman-Ravel.
Well, I, I've always thought the goal of the city of Evanston, one of our goals should be, there will not be any fires. So you'll have fire, five fire stations, and you won't have to respond to any calls, but that's not going to happen. And the important way, I think, to look at the fire service is that it's insurance. You don't want to ever have to use it. But you have that one big event, you know, and, and, you know, the community goes into mourning, there are people dead, houses burned down. So it's, it's just plain and simple insurance. And for every one, every station you move or you close, you know, it's the loss of another policy. I think the Fire Department, I know the Fire Department used to give us a report every, I thought it was every month, maybe it's every quarter, and I've just missed it, about the property value saved. It's not so much you don't have all these gigantic fires. They could be gigantic fires, but you get there and you put them out, and you cover people's furniture, so that you save value in, in the victims' homes. And I, I think that's a really important number for us to all understand, what you've done to prevent additional damage. And then also, at one of my budget meetings, firefighters argued that they would come up with other cuts. And I'm curious to know if any of those cuts have surfaced, other ways to save money in the fire service in Evanston.
I, as I mentioned, I think in my June memo to the APW and the council overall, there were some additional things I thought we could offer as budgetary savings that maintain the service.
June, are they still?
Oh, well, that's, that's up to you.
Okay.
Alderman, that's up to you. And to your point, and you're right, we don't do that monthly report, but I know on my annual report, and I can give you the 2017 numbers, we had 90 fires in 2017. We pro, we saved over 98% of the property, which was over $83 million.
Yeah. That's a really, that's an important number for insurance companies. I'm sure they look at something like that, maybe. They should. We definitely have to look at that as being a value to us and the fire service in Evanston, you know, save that kind of.
Great. Thank you, Alderman-Reiny. Alderman-Ravel.
Well, Chief, I want to second all my colleagues. Thanks to you for this, all this great information, and certainly express my strong support for the, the department and keeping Fire Station Number 4. And I also want to appreciate, express my appreciation for Alderman-Win's many, many questions that I think are going to be helpful to us as we try to look to the future to, you know, achieve greater savings going forward. I have a question about if we have all these, basically, calls that are for healthcare services, and most of those then result in, are taking someone to the hospital, or?
I would say the majority, yes. I can get you more refined data on that if you'd like.
Well, and then, but we also then charge people for that service?
Yes. Alderman, for those cases, we do transport, yes, we do charge.
And so do we, how much do we charge to take people to the hospital?
It depends on whether you're a resident or non-resident, and the type of care provided, but it, it goes from anywhere from $500 to near $1,000, based upon the type of care and whether you live in the city or not.
And so I guess I'm sort of wondering where that revenue comes into the picture in terms of offsetting some of our expenses.
Well, it's in, it's in our current budget. I think it's about $1.7 million in revenue for the, for the department annually.
Wow.
I know the, that the CFO and I are looking at some other options potentially of increasing that revenue by trying to gain more money from the insurance companies, by increased billing rates, while having no impact to the residents of Evanston. So if we need to look at that further, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if these people are relying on the Fire Department for their healthcare, they don't have, you know, vast amounts of money to spend on getting to the hospital. But, you know, I'd be, I'd be interested in some more information on that.
Okay.
And Alderman-Ravel, members of the council, Mr. Desai has had some experience with this in the few years when he's not been working for the city of Evanston. And so we, we see there as an opportunity there to increase that cost, but also put in policies that would protect our residents. So my, my sense is you'll see something more on that from us next week.
Great. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Alderman-Ravel. Alderman-Fisk?
Chief, if it's not too much trouble, is it possible to break down the calls per station by hour? Or by maybe every four hours, what the calls?
So per hour, per station?
No, no, yeah, well.
Okay.
Every, every four hours. I live on Sherman Avenue. I'm between Sheridan Road, Sherman, and Ridge, four blocks from the hospital. I hear every single siren that's going on, and it seems to, to me that there are many more calls in the evening in my area of my ward than anything else. And just balancing that against the, the major fires that we've had.
Okay.
All of which occurred in the evening, not to mention the carbon monoxide when people are home sleeping. So I, I would just like to get a sense of whether our area is unique, or whether I'm reading this wrong, or how it, how it works citywide. Because before we make, if, if we're going to make service adjustments, I want to make sure that we're making them in a smart way.
Okay. I'll look into that.
Chief, we, I see no more lights, so I'll, let me just wrap, wrap things up, and then we'll move on to the next category, City Manager. Thank you very much for this very thorough presentation and the level of detail that you got into. And certainly thank everybody that's a part of the Evanston Fire Department for all of the incredible work that we all value, everybody in this community, everybody up here at this Clearly, you've heard tonight, no one wants to close a station. They don't like that idea, our residents don't like that idea. But we also know that something has to give. We have a $7.5 million deficit here in this, in this city. We are talking, if we don't, you know, get any reductions here with the Fire Department or in some of these other agencies or divisions that we have here, we're talking about a double-digit increase to the property tax in Evanston that has real implications for the families that live here in Evanston. And so I appreciate, and I know people up here do, about the work that you're doing on, how do we reduce the calls? Okay? If that's ultimately a cost savings. How do we increase the amount of reimbursement that we get and receive? You've noted the $1.7 million through Medicaid. If there's other money there that we're leaving on the table, we need to figure out how we, how we get that revenue. You know, closely examining, you know, the calls, and to Alderman-Win's point, and I think there was even an editorial today in the Evanston Now about taking a look at how we staff based on calls. I'm not suggesting that that's, that's the answer, but there needs to be something here. And we call that sort of, I guess, service time adjustments. But the other, other question that I'd have, and I'd like to have a, a policy memo on this, or a budget memo on this, is I'd like to know what has been the effective increase in base compensation for Evanston firefighters over the last five years? And by, you know, base increase, it's the general wage increase, it's any step increases, it's educational increases, it's longevity increases. Basically, I'd like a budget memo so that we understand what has been the effective increase on the labor cost for, for firefighters here in Evanston. Again, everybody respects the incredible job that they do to keep all of us safe. I think everybody up here understands and recognizes that, you know, the cost of living increases every year, you know, and there should be a reasonable increase to do that. But, but I think we need to, to understand better what that cost has been as we, you know, have this conversation just about our budget, and, and what's the right balance here between cuts and, and reductions, or slowing down the increases, future increases that we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's five minutes after 10. My goal would be that we can get to a stopping point at 11. We have, sorry? I'm sorry? I'll talk faster than that. So we've now finished the, the Fire Department, the Parks and Rec Department proposing the elimination of the World's Arts and Music Festival, net cost, the city of $55,000. Reorganization of the Parks Department staff. The majority of that savings is the announced retirement of Assistant Director Bob Dornaker. So there would be other, his responsibilities would be reallocated among Mr. Hemingway and Ms. Hawk, but the lion's share of that savings is Mr. Dornaker's announced retirement. We've already taken Gibbs Morrison off the table, so that is no longer considered. Decreasing expenses associated with the YOU grant, we've been partners with YOU for the last several years for a grant that I think Mr. Hemingway is nearby. I think that was something that the, the outreach workers, Mr. Hemingway, were a part of. And so that, those, those services will not be provided. I don't believe that will have a, a net impact on the services that the outreach team does. And then lastly, an adjustment for overtime for our beaches and aquatics camps. We, we continue to struggle with finding lifeguards. We have raised the hourly rate, I think now two years in a row, when we have discovered that we were not getting applicants to be lifeguards because of other competing, either other competing aquatic jobs with the Chicago Park District or other park districts in the area. So we've been able to increase the hourly rate, but still, we have to use more overtime than we would anticipate in order to keep all the beaches open and cover for the aquatics camps. So not a lot in Parks and Rec, quite honestly. We want to really focus on, on those quality-of-life services that we, we have. I think there's some other long-term planning. Mr. Hemingway would very much like to do a strategic plan for the department, and I think that in the coming year, we will look for opportunities to identify resources to do that, because we would need to have some outside resources to do that. But that is what is proposed for Parks Recreation Committee Services. All right, Public Works, again, a department which has gone through lots of cuts, lots of changes, lots of downsizing over the last several years, a relatively modest adjustment here, the elimination of two FTE Park, Public Works Maintenance Workers, two in our Streets Division, and the elimination of one half-time clerk in the department, administrative clerk. Mr. Stonebeck is here, and I see one light, Mr. Stonebeck, so perhaps you should come to the podium.
And as you're coming up here, Dave, Alderman-Redeck.
Thank you, Dave. I think, well, I read your memo regarding the positions that were being eliminated. I was a little bit concerned when I found out the demographics of the staff, and my understanding is that there's an opportunity for them to reapply for different positions within your department. Is that correct?
Per the union contract, they can take a position that, from a person has less seniority, and there is an open position in Public Works with the same job title, so that's one position that they can take. And then they can take another position, and that, then that person bumps somebody else, becomes to the, the least senior position will probably, least senior person will be removed from the position, as we only have one vacancy right now.
Okay.
We do have a vacancy at a higher position, an equipment operator, too, that several of the people probably will be qualified to take. And so overall, I don't think we'll lose any current employees. They'll be working in different divisions, and somebody will actually get a promotion to an equipment operator, too, more than likely.
Okay. Great. Thank, thank you. I don't see any of the lights on that topic.
So that takes us through the operating departments, then there are several citywide adjustments. One is the elimination of terminating sick payouts for non-union employees. Again, Ms. Dorley could probably speak to this better than I can, but I think as we are looking at employees, and terminating is, is a generic term, in this instance, any, any employee really separating who is entitled to sick payments. Currently, there is a payout for that. We are proposing the elimination of that. Since the budget has come out, Ms. Dorley and I, and Jennifer Lynn, our Human Resources manager, have, are looking at other options associated with that, so we'll be, I think, likely proposing a change there to, to that proposal. No general wage increase for non-union employees, as you know, in the base budget is a 2.6% general wage increase for all employees. And so I am proposing that those who are not represented by unions, so managers, supervisors largely, would not receive that, any increase regardless of what was negotiated, so that is a large reduction there. A reduction in travel and training, the council has expressed concern, and I share concern in difficult budget times, that it's important to reduce that spending. The Police and Fire Department have required training, which would not be reduced, so this is training and travel in the other city departments, $25,000. Decreased cell phone stipends, we have a whole array of cell phone stipends as we've gone from not, when I arrived here nine years ago, all employees had city cell phones. Over the years, we have reduced the number of city cell phones pretty dramatically, so that an employee instead receives a stipend. We would rearrange those stipends for all employees that are receiving it, they would all receive a flat $40 a month. I think, Hattash, some of them are $80 or $90 a month on the higher end, so that we would, and some are even less than that. But I think we would make adjustments so that the, the high-end stipends would be down to $40 per month, saving significantly. 5% increase in employee portion of health care for non-union employees. We have already moved forward with that increase, so if the council were to reverse it, we would, we would have to undo some of the work that we're already doing, but we're, our employees are already choosing their health care options for next year. So non-union employees seeing that reduction. And then finally, a reduction in all auto allowances by 50%. So most of these citywide are impacting your managers, so no, you know, the changes to sick leave payout, many managers are involved with that, no general wage increase, cell phone stipends, employee health care, reduction in auto allowance, those are all, all issues, all funds that will impact. So these are in essence reductions in compensation to your managers and supervisors. And so I would, would like some flexibility as we are balancing, if we can perhaps take one or two of those off the table. I do not want to unduly burden managers and supervisors one or two of those off the table. I do not want to unduly burden managers and supervisors with not only not seeing any increases, but seeing reductions in their compensation. And so, if there's an ability to make some adjustments there, those are largely small numbers. I would think that the general wage increase being zero is not one that would change, but there perhaps is opportunities to make adjustments in some of those others as we move forward. So, those are all of the general fund expense adjustments.
Great, we got one light. Alderman Fleming?
So, I still am going to push for the auto allowance. I realize that, you know, we're cutting other things, but I also realize we have a $7 million deficit. And, you know, being that we, I know it's going to be winter soon, but we have the bicycles, we have, you know, city cars outside, and we are not a very big city. I think we should just go, you know, to the mileage reimbursement. People have to obviously fill out paperwork and do that piece of it. But I guess, given this time in our budget, and given that we are a city, you know, we're a municipality, working with taxpayer dollars, I just feel like it's wasteful that we are offering auto allowances for people when they have other means of transportation in the city. Again, I am very frustrated by the auto allowance of the library director in general. And I would hope that our, you know, our management staff, I understand they're taking some bigger hits, but they also, you know, make more money than some of our lower-level staff. So, I think, as we looked at even like the, as Alderman Rainey put it, the real estate transfer tax, and how that's going to only really hit people who are, you know, have more expensive houses, I think, in this time when we're asking everyone to take a hit, and some people are losing a job, that we just really have to cut around the edges a little bit more for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, changes in other funds. So, we have talked now for two evenings totally about the general fund. So, other expenses, changes for other funds, the no general wage increase for non-union employees for other funds would be a savings to those other funds of $143,000. Next, the solid waste fund, special refuse pickups, proposing to increase those special refuse pickups from $60 to $100. Mr. Stonebeck is here, I think, can speak to the fact that the deficit that we run with special pickups continues to be sizable. And I think even at $100, that will not cover our costs. Is that a correct statement, sir? And to what's the order of magnitude that we are still then subsidizing special pickups? If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium?
I don't have the specific information right in front of me.
Order of magnitude?
About $40 per special pickup. I think it's about $140 per special pickup that we, is our cost. And that is equivalent to the cost that if you were to hire an outside contractor, to you go buy the three cubic yard bag, to you hire them to come pick it up, our cost is still cheaper than what their cost is with this $100 rate that we're proposing.
All right. And then, in the parking fund, Ms. Dorley, I'm going to ask you to come up and help with this. We've talked about some of this already. The addition of a neighborhood parking specialist, could you explain that? That's different than, that's not a parking enforcement officer.
That is not a parking enforcement officer. As you know, the residential parking zones throughout the city, very complicated, haven't, some of them haven't been evaluated in a long time. There's a lot of demand and need for those to be looked at further. I think that there's enough work for this person for the next five years with the extensive regulations that we have throughout the city. We also want to make sure that we have consistency in both the city code, the signs that are on the streets, and then the GIS system. So, right now, those are all, all three of those things are not in, they're inconsistent. So, if you, if you looked at the sign on your street, it may not match what's codified in the code. We've found in the past, some of these residential zones weren't actually codified, but the signs were put up. So, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get all of those things synced up. And that's pretty much the bulk of what that responsibility would be.
Thank you. We got a couple lights. Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Wilson.
Sorry. So, would this person essentially do some of what we were trying to do with the comprehensive parking study and Parking and Transportation Committee?
Yes, in addition to many other duties that we have a high demand for, that we don't have the staff for right now. Parking has a very lean staff, and I think that this position would be well utilized and would...
And what was the cost? I can't remember what we had set aside for the consultant for that parking study. Was it $30,000 or something? Or $100? So, we could use that money that we did not spend on the study for this position for one year?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Alderman?
I'm sorry.
Did you want to ask? Alderman Wilson?
Everything you said is true about the parking situations, but it's, a city like ours is, you know, every other block is different. So, I think my observation and my experience is that somebody's going to come in, spend a lot, a lot of time figuring out why every couple blocks are different, and probably not change a lot. So, I kind of feel like it's, you know, as needs change, the community kind of lets us hear about it. So, you know, it would be great to have that, but, you know, given all the other stuff we're cutting and adding on to, I just don't feel like that's, you know, a super high priority for me right now.
Sure. I would like to mention that we're not proposing that we would change any of the existing regulations. I know that that gives a lot of people a lot of anxiety. But what I will say is that the volume of evaluating new regulations, new zones, all of that comes in from each and every one of you on a fairly regular basis. So, there's a lot of demand for evaluations that we don't actually have the staff to do. So, we try to do them a little bit at a time. But when you do them a little bit at a time here and there, you're not looking at the entire system. You're looking at one block and how it's affected by what's currently happening in that, and not what's happening down the street or two blocks over. And so, there's a lot, there's a lot of decisions that get made, I would say, in, without taking the whole system into context. Additionally, with the elimination of the administrative assistant in the city manager's office, that person largely handles a lot of the bill payment for parking. This position would handle the bill payment as well. Taking that over for the position that we're losing funded by the parking fund makes sense. And then, other, there's a, it's real tax season right now. The Parking Division Manager is spending the entirety of her day, every day, answering questions about residential zones and not having any time to manage the department. So, this would also assist with those types of things.
Okay. So, give me a more full and complete job description, because my initial perception was somebody's going to come in and evaluate all of our parking areas and try to come up with better ideas. But that's maybe just a portion of it from what I'm hearing.
Sure. I'll put a job description and a budget memo for this week.
Okay, great. Thank you. That'd be great.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, this is something that I don't think we should do right now. I think, those of us who have big parking districts in our wards know the pressures that are on them. And I would just as soon put this off. Again, given the situation with the budget, I'm not saying that it won't be needed at some point in the future, but I think right now is not the right time.
Thank you.
So, let's skip to the bottom. Increased downtown parking meters, $1 to $2 an hour. $2 million. What I have heard from talking with members of the council is an understanding that there's a, there's a need to go down a road. Perhaps that road needs to have a twist and a turn. So, perhaps there's an opportunity to have an increase next year, but commit through this budget process to other increases. I think Sunday falls into the same mix. Alderman Wynn and I had a long conversation this afternoon, kind of a, of a package of all of this. And so, I would guess I would be, would ask the council, is your willingness to see staff come back, perhaps with what might be a 19, 20, 21 package that we would raise the downtown parking meters in some sort of incremental fashion? Perhaps deal, have a comeback with a strategy to deal with Sundays in some sort of phased way? I think the increased surface parking lots, there's been, I think, general agreement for increases there, and the other, the decks and all of that. So, really, it's the meters and Sunday which seem to be the issue. So, I'm looking to see if, if we're along the right track, we're happy to come back with a proposal.
Alderman Wynn?
Well, I think, well, yes, that is right. I don't think that we can go double the parking meter fees in downtown without, I just don't think that that's a smart idea for us right now. I think some type of increase, if we have to have it, that we should do that. And then, perhaps look at the stepping it up gradually over several years. But I don't really have, I think, increasing, I mean, putting, starting the Sunday parking meters at noon or 1:00 is, that's acceptable to me. But I think that I wouldn't want to change it because of the number of people who attend church and in the mornings, that, so that would be, I think, a real burden on those congregations. But I think starting the Sunday meters at whatever is an appropriate time, after we've consulted with the ministers of those congregations, would be appropriate.
Great, thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Generally, I think I agree with that. I don't want to draw it out too long, though. In my mind, I was kind of thinking $1.50 next year, $2.00 a year after that, and then starting this Sunday parking a little bit later in the day, instead of, you know, right at 8:00 AM, church hours, things like that. I realize we lose some of the money, but...
We did a budget memo for Friday that outlined what we expect the revenues to be if we started it at 12:00. It's still very significant.
Yeah.
And meaningful. We also put in an alternate proposal for the meters, to do $1.50 next year, $1.80 the following year, and then $2.00 the third year.
Right. And I saw that. I just kind of feel like people, it's that old idea, like, I'm getting nickel and dimed, you know, and I'm getting, and so, you know, if it goes up every year, you know, let's just, let's just do it. And it'll sit at $2.00 for a while, and then at some point, it'll have to go from there. But that's just my own inclination. I'd rather just kind of, you know, two years, get it up there, and then, and I agree with the later start in the day for Sunday.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rainey?
This is sort of on this subject, but I'm very, very much in support of adding two PEOs. And I think any, and I agree with Alderman Wilson about nickel and diming, you know, 10 cents here, 10, it just irritates people so much. But I believe that revenue is going to be generated in an extreme amount, given the scoff laws that are in the neighborhoods on Saturdays, Sundays, and evenings. Every evening after 6:00, that is where our money's going to be made. So, if we can add those two PEOs and put them in the right places at the right time, then we will generate money. Not from our residents who are obeying the law. They just can't find a place to park anymore, because during those times, it is known that there aren't many enforcement officers out. So...
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
Okay. So, I agree with what, basically what Alderman Wilson says. This is one of those situations where, you know, raising the parking meter fees, I would really like Economic Development to take a look at that. And I would definitely like, ask those of us who, you know, are in the downtown to sort of go door-to-door and talk to folks about, about how they view the raising of the parking fees on their small businesses. I had suggested before raising the surface, the rates for the surface lots to $90. I'm not sure that's been incorporated here, but I think that's generally the amount that is being charged by private property owners. And I think we ought to match that as a city. And also, I would just say that I think an increase in the meter rates would be much more acceptable to everyone if it were citywide and not just targeted to the downtown. I'm not sure where you now draw the distinction between downtown, I mean, Dempster and, and the Central Business District are marketing themselves together. I mean, how far do you go with it? Do you, then, do you go down Chicago Avenue to Main Street? Do you go up to Central Street? But I think targeting the downtown is something that will be viewed by downtown business owners, who also have some of the highest rents in the city, as inequitable. And I don't want to go there.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
What was the, I think I missed it. So, what was the recommended afternoon time on Sunday? Did anyone?
Starting at noon?
1:00?
1:00 better than noon.
I guess I would suggest for the churches that maybe we bump it back to 2:00. Well, you don't have, that's what I'm saying. It should be a discussion with the downtown churches. Excuse me?
8:00 and 10:00 churches. At Second Baptist.
Second Baptist primarily. And Lake Street.
Yeah.
And there's a Unitarian Church. Yeah. I just think it should be a conversation with the pastors.
We can consult with the faith community throughout this week and come back next Monday with results.
Thank you. Alderman Severn?
Yeah, can we play with these numbers? Because it sounds like the consensus up here is don't raise the meters to $2.00, don't start them. Like, everything that's up there isn't true anymore.
Right.
So, can we have like a...
And we're, and our plan will be to come back with a, with a, with a compilation revision.
Okay. And if I may, along the lines of what Alderman Fisk was saying, talking to Economic Development, can we have some insight into what's better, to turn the meters over more frequently or to charge more? Because perhaps, rather than doing it by the hour, we should have meters that are only for a half hour for people who are doing quick run-ins and run-outs of stores. And longer-term parkers would be able to take advantage of the parking garages and see if that, how that would work with Economic Development and with revenue generation.
Sure, we can evaluate that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm a little unclear as to the council's desire of focusing on the downtown for an increase, or have the increase be citywide?
Well, to my, I'm sorry, I didn't turn my light on.
Go ahead.
I guess I understand and share, Alderman Fisk, and I brought this up last week when I talked about the parking decks being free on Sunday downtown. But then, if you go to Main Street, you know, the parking lot will not be free. And I know the conversation was, well, people can park in the neighborhoods, but I can tell you Washington and Monroe or whatever the street is there, there's no parking. And if there is parking, they're taking it away from a resident who, you know, lives there and is already probably not parking in front of their house, because there's a lot of apartment buildings. So, I think if we're going to raise the rates, we just raise the rates. I don't think you should get anything less or more because you're in downtown or not downtown. So, I think if the meters are going up downtown, they should go up, at least in every business district, maybe not, you know, on a residential street. But in the business districts, they should go up. And I think, you know, I'll stick to that the decks should also, you know, have some kind of cost, because, you know, when you come to Main Street or you go to Howard Street, you're not guaranteed a parking space. I mean, there's no deck, so you're circling around as well. And we don't want people, you know, not visiting Howard Street, because now they're circling even more, and then they start going downtown. So, I just think we have to do it across the board if we're going to do it, to make it fair to every business owner. They're not being penalized just based on wherever they decided to start their business, or property owners are not being penalized to have overflow of traffic or parking because they are not downtown.
Great. I'll reiterate what I said before. I like this demand-based pricing model that you presented to the council before, because if it still gives people an option to park somewhere at the same price, basically, that they're paying now, you know, someone can choose if they're going to pay more for convenience. I think that that's just smart and thoughtful. All right, I see nothing else on...
All right. So, I think let's skip the below-the-line changes. This was just other musings of other revenue increases. The, we've not talked about the utility adjustments. And Kate, do we have that on a sheet we can bring up?
There is a budget memo.
Okay, can we just pull up the budget memo? So, Mr. Stonebeck, if you could come up, let's talk about water and sewer rates. So, we are proposing a decrease in water...
Sewer.
So, decrease in sewer and an increase in water for a net change of... So, decrease in sewer and an increase in water for a net change of-
Zero.
Zero.
To the ratepayers.
So, if you're all happy with that, again, we've, I think this is a, a strategy that we have shared with the council over several years, that as, as the changes come and the budget memo is up on the screen from the one fund, we're able to raise the rates in the other. Solid waste?
Solid waste, in addition to the special pickup charger seeking a 15% increase for the cost of the, both the 95-yard cart and the 65-yard cart, 65-gallon, I'm sorry.
Kate, there a budget memo? Okay.
It, it will be in the packet that's coming next Monday, when we propose the ordinance modification.
Can I ask a question about that? Is that just to still cover our cost to Groot, or is that now revenue generation?
It's, it's our cost to pay Groot for the service that they provide.
So, this year, we're currently still subsidizing? People are not paying what we pay?
I, I guess I don't understand your question.
So, if I'm paying $40 for my yard cart, is this, is that covering what we pay Groot as a city, or is the city paying 60, and I'm only paying 40 of the 60?
And I apologize, I misspoke when I said earlier. This has nothing to do with the yard cart.
Right.
We're not raising prices for the yard, or yard waste disposal. We're raising the price for refuse disposal for 95-gallon cart or 65-gallon cart.
I understand that. So, what I'm asking is that cost, are we raising that cost to meet the cost that we pay out, or is this now a revenue generation?
It's to do that, and as council approved last year, we're going to have a property tax increase as well. The memo that I'm presenting next Monday night indicates that when we did our calculation last year, we were, I did not thoroughly investigate what our revenue generation was. I assumed what was in the budget was correct. It was not. We mis, we overstated how much revenue we actually brought in. That was back-checked this year, and we were not bringing the revenue that we anticipated. In addition, at the end of 2018, the amount of funds transferred to the, to the solid waste fund from the general fund was not made. So, we were already in the hole. We went further in the hole, and as part of the 2018 budget, we shifted salaries from the general fund to the solid waste fund. So, to try really get the solid waste fund as a true enterprise fund, paying for all of its services. So, when we did all that, and we're reducing the transfer from the general fund to the solid waste fund, we said we were going to go to 350 this year. We're actually going to only 150. So, with all those things in mind, the, the need to have the property tax increase that we discussed previously does not get us out of the hole in the solid waste fund. And that, the, the way to get us out of the hole is to raise the rates for the, the refuge collection that we, that is performed.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Rainey.
I was just going to say, before you get started with this, particularly when you mentioned the property tax increase, I think this is a very important topic. My bandwidth right now is probably not where it needs to be to absorb all this information, and I'm being serious.
I agree.
And so, I would respectfully ask the mayor, city manager, that maybe-
Sure.
I don't want to kick the can on this, but I would love to participate in this conversation when I, when I'm more awake.
And, and there is a full council memo-
Yeah.
-for ordinance adoption being introduced at the next council meeting, and the full justification is there, along with the five-year projection of what the fund balance will be, and shows us slowly getting out of the hole, breaking even. But yes, I, I'd be in a better position to discuss it next week as well.
All right. I don't think you'll find too many objectors up here to that. Alderman Rainey?
For those users, homes that are single-family and duplexes that are not multifamily, I think it's over five is multifamily, is that what we're reading?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Do we have, do we have people who don't pay their bill? They can't pay their bill? And if we do, what do we do about that?
The way the, so, the city sends out a utility bill-
Yeah.
-that covers water, sewer, and solid waste cost. So, the first funds applied go to the solid waste charge, the next funds go to the sewer funds, and the last one goes to the water fund. So, it's, it shows up as you're not paying your water bill, and that's how that works.
I never knew that. All these years, I've never known that.
Sorry, you didn't know that.
So, you could not pay your garbage, you could think you're not paying the garbage bill, but-
In reality, you're not paying your water bill.
Your water gets shut off. Okay. Do we have, and do we have any cases like that? I mean, I know about water shut offs, but I mean-
Right. And that's what it-
Can we attribute it directly to?
We, we attribute it directly to a failure to pay all three of those services.
But they're, they're separated out on the bill?
Correct. And I don't believe that, it, it's a non-payment of the entire bill that's generally occurring. It's not, I'm paying, if they're on a, on a payment plan, they're paying a portion. But in most cases, they are, they're failing to pay the entire bill.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll, well, as Mr. Stonebeck mentioned, this will be on, the ordinances for the rate adjustments will be on the council agenda on Monday for first reading, the background materials there. What I'd like to do now is take the comments you've made during the course of the last two meetings, and come back to you next Monday with a revised budget balancing worksheet that reflects the discussions and also still balances the budget. So, the staff will work on that during the course of the week, and we'll be back with you Monday evening. But thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your suggestion. I think the, the, the discussion going through department by department will work very well, and we'll be back next week with more information.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We're going to go right now to call the wards. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all the residents who continue to come out and send us emails and provide us feedback on the budget. I do want to address some comments that were made earlier, and I think it's, you know, clear, we're always going to be mindful of our tone and rhetoric, but I think it's important, particularly to our residents who come to the mic. It's one thing always to criticize us, but I think you crossed the line when you criticize our staff. And we've had many discussions about our civility, our behavior, and I just think that it's important to say that there are some things that just cross the line, and I think that line was crossed tonight. And I hope that folks will be more mindful of that. Our staff work very hard on behalf of our residents, as well as on behalf of our council, and I just think that that type of conversation, there's no place for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Winn?
Well, I would echo what Alderman Braithwaite said. We have a superb staff, and they work very, very hard. Evanston is, is a challenging community to work in. Sometimes that's a wonderful challenge, sometimes that's a really difficult challenge, but we get the best people, and I really appreciate it, and I think the vast majority of our residents do too. So, I want to thank all of our staff. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
I agree with that very much, and, you know, we want to keep getting the best staff and the best people, and, you know, my lookout in the room, staff's still here. So, it's been a long, long day for them. It's been a long day for everybody, but, you know, the, the level of commitment, I have never, and I've worked with a lot of different communities in different capacities, I never really seen anything like it. But at the same time, we provide availability and services to the community, which I think are also unmatched. You know, I look at other communities, I was looking at Rockford, I think they let five people speak at public comment for three minutes, and you have to sign up in advance, and that's it. So, and it's just the idea that we've had, you know, well over a dozen community meetings about this budget. You know, the budget process is, is vast, extensive, and the amount of information that we make available is, is really truly unmatched. So, if, I've said it last week, but if you, if you're curious, you can find that. But it's, it's, it's not work I did, it's work that our staff has put together and compiled, and they do an outstanding job of that, and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons?
No report.
Alderman Severn? Alderman Revell? Alderman Rainey?
I think that you, Mayor Hagerty, have a real responsibility to not allow that kind of comment go on. I really think, to sit here and listen to it when we don't have to, on part of our staff, I, I really think you need to turn off the mic, or tell people they need to clean up their speech. I really do. I think you have, you have the absolute power to do that, and I wish you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to echo what my colleagues have said about, about the staff and about the citizens who are the four, or three of you, four of you maybe, who are still here. You know, the budget is really, really complicated, and we work really hard to try to understand it. I don't think any of us totally understand it, but our, our staff does. And, and the way that they take the time to explain it to us, I mean, if you go, if you go online and you look at the budget memos, incredible detail, all of which is extremely helpful. So, I, I just, again, I've mentioned this in the past, I am extremely concerned about the level of vitriol at the podium, and somehow, we need to get back to the place where we're all working together. The city council has a, has a responsibility to the staff, all of whom are extremely hardworking. Mr. City Manager, as the leader of the staff, I appreciate so much the work that you've put into this, and Mr. Mayor, you and I have had conversations about this previously, and we'll try to figure the way out. I, I do want to restore faith in the community, in the city council, because I think we're doing a really amazing job in a really hard time. So, thanks to all of you that showed up tonight, but thanks to our great staff.
Indeed. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you, everybody. Good night.